Commission meeting, we'll go look to the minutes of our last meeting, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and may I have a motion on them?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Commissioner Francis, second from Commissioner Harrison. Anything to discuss, Commissioner Francis? Commissioner Harrison, no. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. C six, seven, Commissioner Levy, okay. So, C seven hands, minutes approved unanimously. Next item is new applications for recommendation to public hearing, twenty-five-hundred block rock turnpike, special permit application of Lennox Properties LLC for an addition to an existing commercial building in the design commercial district. Mr. Wendt?
I don't have much to add to that, other than this is the Black's Jewelers property, looking to whether they were called before it was Black's Jewelers or been closed in what was the right to tell. To add more, it's a special permission.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to public hearing from Commissioner Francis, second Commissioner Bremen, anything to add?
No.
No. Okay. Any hearings required, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. C seven hands, Commissioner Braun, that was a hand up? Yes, thank you. So, passes unanimously. Next is zoning regulation amendment, application of the Economic Development Commission to amend sections twelve-point-three, point fifteen, twelve-point-four, point seventeen, twelve-point-five, point fifteen, thirteen, point fourteen, point two, twenty-one, point sixteen, point three, point twelve, and twenty-eight, point six, point twelve relating to provisions for outdoor dining. Mr. Wendt?
Mr. Chairman, I call that this commission heard and denied without prejudice some more application earlier this year, on the cusp of the generalists standing focused on this, this presentation was seeking to that proposal by the Economic Development Commission to discuss regulations proposal that does require a motion.
Thank you. May I have a motion, Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion to table this at a planning meeting versus meeting like tonight. I think this is a very important regulation to consider, regulations to consider changes, and I think we have time on our side. I don't think the, think the executive word is going to affect or stays into effect until March of this year, so we have six months. And it's been by very staple the meeting, the bike walk pedestrian Economic Development Commission, you know, various folks, and this is a really good idea, but I think we deserve to spend more time on this, and that's what we decided when we spoke about it at our last meeting in April, when this came up, so I'd like to hold this over for a future meeting.
Okay. Well, let's give a second, just so we can have more discussion on it if needed. Is there a motion to second, second Commissioner Francis? You said, is there anything else to add?
No, nothing to add. I think it's a great idea. I mean, I've done some homework in the last few months, but I know I need to do more. We've been kind of busy this summer with other matters.
Okay. I have a question for staff in a second, but Commissioner Francis, anything since you're second?
I would just add that it's likely that the legislature will even approve this for another year, extend it for another year because COVID isn't over in ours, according to our governor and health department. And, you know, the restaurants have gotten a lot of privilege these last two or three years, but, you know, it may just continue with our doing nothing.
Good. For an application with this to recommend a public hearing, is it within our purview to table as the motion is to do a planning session?
Well, short answer, yes. You have a pending application, we don't have to open any hearing for five days, so we should not be those groups can, but we can also, an alternative, although that the economic, that has requested by this commission will have take over input from us specifically here from other the business community, other than restaurants, police department, two examples, certainly make sure that bike, like, the bike pedestrian committee did the hearing, give them notice if they want to participate in that discussion, it can be an informal question, so.
No, I appreciate that.
We should, we should have a separate process before we go to a hearing, you can that, or we can move all of those folks from our specifically, we do some obligation at bike hearings.
The reason I had asked was, I wasn't really sure what the rights and due process, you know, if it's getting.
It's a town application, so we can, we have, I think we have plenty of time to pursue whichever.
Because other applicants, you have to go to a hearing, so to speak, you can't kind of table it, so to speak. So, my initial thought, you know, we gave, they kicked us first, we, as Mr. Wendt said, wanted to go back and get some more inputs. I, I do remember talking, saying that they would do that and come back. I'm open to the other, the rest of the commission, if you want to have a planning first, to invite people to talk, but it seems like they've done some lot of homework that we may want to listen to. We do have time, even after the hearing, we can invite people at the hearing, planning session, it doesn't, planning session can be partly this hearing and partly something we do after the fact. This is a town application, as said, so, I mean, my initial thought is to have the hearing to see what's done, maybe they've done the work that we're requested already, and we have already requested. But, any other members of the commission? Before I go, I'm asking if anyone else wants to talk?
What's the difference, I mean, I've taken up the planning hearing, and I was having such a special, so we do that, we want to do a space. Is the planning hearing?
Yeah. It may be a different, it's kind of a self-publication, but, that's kind of it. Very, very, there may be, may help, we don't, we wouldn't, whether, whatever happens, or the decision of, as, or our, or it's a term, whatever, we should be able to see what to, why, during hearing now, so you can, but, what's going to?
Yeah, a third question, have we done, have we taken by other folks? They don't?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, who's been invited?
Well, this is, this is a quick one.
Whenever that meeting, we can make certain, like, whatever, or there's, you wish, targets to, based on that.
I have a number of, on my own, if I'm ever talking to, if I'm talking to, if I'd like to, you know, sit in public forum, so.
Sure. Which is what they're requesting is to have a public hearing.
I hear the hearing, what a fortunate opportunity for that conversation, separate from a special or a separate planning meeting, and how that was, how that was, he should see, we can certainly, got, really, what, certainly, Barnhart put his role, help everybody then, and come back and be better, but, maybe we can, to hear it, then we can, we can.
Can you just confirm, we do have, wait, 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 I mean, we, this is extended to like March, that's the point?
Oh, right, the, current orders, I, I, tires, yeah, or the end of paper, but, that they, that the worst, earliest case.
But the timeframe, it's based on?
They're talking state regulations.
Yeah, yeah, but again, I can't, that's very, very, like, how application, situation, applicant. This position, this, perhaps, perhaps what we do is, let's get all the, for the portion of material, going to be, it's going to spring, you see, that, that just, and then if you want to go from there, but I think we can, if you were to, if you were to, you can, provide you that, flexible, so it's pretty flexible.
Commissioner Bremen?
The suggestion makes sense to me.
Any other members? Uh, it's really, Harrison, the suggestion from this, I, as I understand, it moved forward to a public hearing, get the materials, see if additional, see, and then at that point, see, if we, I want to, do, schedule the public hearing, who else we need to fight to the public hearing, to supplement the, that the Economic Development Commission will give us, for example, if for whatever reason, the bike, bike commission, bike, whatever the prop, the title is, if for whatever reason they, but with not thoughts, we ask for next two weeks, four weeks, and get foot, as an example, maybe they already have it. Of course, anybody, I guess the point, move, maybe, caring, see what the materials are, and if we need to supplement it, we have time to supplement it, as it's our own town agency or commission, make it back location. I mean, I know, Mr. Barnhart is, so.
I appreciate that, um, so, should I withdraw my?
Uh, or, however you want to do it.
Thank you for the discussion, thank you, appreciate it. All right, so we should make a motion to?
Move to public hearing? Okay. Is that second okay with you, the amendment? Uh, any more questions? All those in favor, aye or raise your hand? C seven hands, passes unanimously. Okay. Old business. Uh, we have, I'll call them together, zoning regulation, application of Uncle Road LLC to amend section three of the zoning regulation, the center design district, propose new section twelve-point-three, point twenty-one, entitled inclusion multi-family residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce components, and a fifteen, Uncle Road, client's application of fifteen Uncle Road LLC, for change to construct sixty-three unit residential building going to section eight, G of the general statute. So, as this mission and all, at the last hearing, we had extensive conversation, the three topics to be addressed and voted, the regulation amendments, the site plan application, and then the plan. Staff reviewed our comments, compiled, hey, how was it, right, uh, regulate, or findings with respect to the zoning compliance application and the intervening application. We do need to probably, or flush out their application more, but I think we fully exhausted at least, uh, the substantive conversation on the regulation and the site plan. Um, staff, as I said, circulated findings for each of the new application. Um, my thought is maybe read them in record, because they will become part of the record at a later date, so we can just avoid the time constraints, uh, but has that, let's get at least on the table for regulation amendment. Uh, my thought is that we go through each of the application, see if any of the, have any additional changes to what has been circulated, um, hopefully it should be minors, of typos and non-substantive, if the conversation, to read the findings into the record for the, for the conversations, be that, all my thought again is limit ourselves, if there's any issue, uh, presented by staff. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's get a motion for the regulations portion.
Didn't we have a question?
Yes. Yes, a motion that was initially to deny the conversation, and then we had a motion to, so we can get the findings, that put together a joint statement of findings, which again has been circulated, and we've all had a chance to, but still, uh, we get a motion on to stop the findings as presented by staff, because they reflect the conversation that we had the last meeting. May I have a motion, amendment? Commissioner Braun?
I think it's to deny.
With findings that, is that?
My vote, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Second Commissioner Kit. So, I assume, to review the finding, uh, draft, Commissioner Braun, anything to add or?
I have, minor, minor, typo, typo, and then I have something I'd like, I'd like, um, the minor thing is, on page two, which is permitted for block coverage, because?
Ken, Ken, I'm sorry, you're, I can't, I can't hear you very well, so I don't know if we need to pass the phone.
This is, this is a mic.
Well, Commissioner Braun, before I forget, because I think you, the regulation amended findings are the highlighted text.
But the narrative, I think, has was typo in it.
I don't think the narrative, Mr. Braun, the narrative was for us, for our discussion purposes, for a lot of hearings.
I think the narrative is part of it.
My, my, the commission, I think, my opinion, I think it would probably be helpful to have the introduction, the narrative.
Okay.
As part of it, like the statement with the findings, except that, but.
Okay, so, on page two, like the fifth, one, two, three, four, six, seven, six sentences
down, it says permitted pervious lot coverage of a hundred percent of the market of the area of the lot, I think that means impervious, right?
Yes.
Okay. And going down farther, halfway down, it says the town's own transit oriented development study recognizes blah, blah, blah. I, I would like to insert the year of that study, so it's very clear this predated this application. It's, I think it was twenty eighteen, but you can correct me from, oh, twenty nineteen, yeah. Then, on page four, under the zoning, the project application.
You're on zoning compliance?
Oh, we're only doing them one at a time? Okay, okay, okay. That's it, then.
Commissioner Kit, anything? So, I requested, because of technical difficulties, I requested Commissioner Kit, if there's anything, and she indicated no, nothing, and accepts the, the typographical changes. Any other members of the commission wish to be heard about the, the findings as drafted for step-by-staff, uh, for the regulation amendments? Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I would just like for the record to be clear that, both the preamble, you know, the statement of fact, as well as the findings, should be considered part of the record, as well as our comments as expressed in the last hearing.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the regulation finding amendment is the attempt to encapsulate everything, but we did have, you know, I think we were pretty clear that, what our positions were, and that they should be included as well, but this is, I think, a very good, I think, uh, what's the word, a complete finding or summary of what our, what our discussion was, should there be any differences, you know, that our comments in our last meeting should also supplement this. Any other member of the commission wish, um, to speak on the findings as drafted by staff, based on our last conversation? Commissioner Bremen?
Thanks, I just echo that, I, I think the, the collective statement, um, very accurately captures the consensus of the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Bremen. Anything else? Any other member of the commission wish to be heard? Any, either add to or amend the findings, like I said, I think it's fairly complete. Okay. So, the motion is to deny, uh, we have the regulation amendment findings and the narrative as drafted by staff. All those in favor of the denial, please say aye or raise your hand. C seven hands, so the denial passes unanimously. Moving on to the zoning compliance, kind of the same parameters, uh, for this one as well, uh, but may I have a motion for the zoning compliance application? Commissioner Bremen?
I move to deny the zoning compliance application based on the collective statement and, uh, the findings as drafted by staff, uh, which are a distillation of the views of the commission we expressed at the last hearing.
Thank you. May I have a second? Commissioner Kit, seconds? Uh, Commissioner Bremen, uh, kind of the same idea, anything to amend or add or modify to the narrative, uh, or the collective statement as drafted by staff?
You know, I propose a graphical, or largely typographical stylistic correction, um, or edits to the collective statement, uh, which you have in front of you.
Yeah, they've already been incorporated in.
Correct.
Correct. Commissioner Kit?
No, um, I'm free with the compilation of comments, and totally out of, probably too long.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Levy said, this supplements our previous discussions from our last, well, not just supplement, it's, it seeks to summarize and encapsulate the discussions that we had, but as we said, our previous discussions can act as a supplement to this narrative and to these findings that's drafted by staff. I do believe the, the findings are fairly complete and encompassing of what we discussed, but to the extent there's anything that needs to be added, um, it can be supplemented by what we said in the previous hearing. Any other member of the commission, Commissioner Braun?
Um, I, I, page two.
Uh, that's right.
Page five. Bremen. I was just, I was just wondering about, so, the, 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 the , I would prefer to say, that, that, uh, is, is that adequate, that, that, that has not been done. Both, both, uh, our town engineer, Mr. Hurley, as well as Mr. Harris, I will, will, there's not, not, enough checking or information, um, and, and, we went into more details about that, modeling, not necessarily, relying on, um, period, period, test, and, and, by Malona McBroom, for focus, and then, and then, that was done, we're done here, we're not, we're not, we're not, I couldn't find one, you with the, but, so, so, um.
If we could just, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you, oh.
All right.
I just missed the last sentence or so.
Also, another inadequacy was they were done in November for, uh, the engineers on this project, and Malona McBroom did them in, in January of twenty seventeen, so this was November of twenty nineteen, for the two test bits on the site, which are not shown on the plans, and the test bits by Malona McBroom, which were randomly all over the area for a whole different type of project, not related to this, um, based on a grant the town had gotten, and that was done in January of twenty seventeen. So, another inadequacy, both Mr. Hurley and the intervenor's, um, engineer pointed out that the time of year matters, seasonal high water matters, and also modeling was noted, but that should be noted as an indic, indicia that there could be higher seasonal water, modeling could be a sign of, of water, except it wasn't there when they tested it, because it was not during the high water season. So, all those inadequacies, um, were noted by them, so that's why I would like to make it their opinion that there was inadequate testing, and without adequate testing, you don't really know where the water is, where it's going, um, and what the impact will be of the development. If you don't know the current site conditions, you can't really know the full impact of what the development could be, so, that's why I would like that.
Just wanted to, to be clear, so that you want that sentence, interrupt the hearing engineers, both the town and the interviewer opined that adequate testing had not been done.
Yes. Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Face for certainty that I had access.
Okay. And I think that's, that the record reflects that, for you, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, no, that's fine. No, it's just not what, what you, what, Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Braun, did you have anything else?
Yeah, yeah, um, in random places, we talked about, well, in the parking section, um, we talked about sixty-three units, I, um, I don't know if in this section we mentioned that that, well, I know in the beginning we mentioned that means a hundred and six bedrooms. I would like to insert perhaps, on the second paragraph of, of page seven, which says the site plan proposes sixty parking spaces for sixty-three dwelling units, maybe insert, which includes a hundred and six bedrooms, plus dens which could potentially be used, um, as bedrooms. The reason being, the number of people matters when you're talking about parking needs, and I know we did say a hundred and six in the beginning, but I think it might be good to highlight that a little bit. That's, that's that comment. Insert, number of bedrooms, and indicate that there are also dens included, although we don't know the number, they never did tell us that, it's really hard to tell from looking at the miniscule drawing of the, of the apartments, but there are dens, we were told there are dens, and we do know that dens can be used for additional people.
I respect the suggestion, that, 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 that.
That's great. Thank you. Not that the, 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 the,
I think you were anything else you wanted to add? You know, Commissioner Braun. Does any other member of the committee have to add the narrative? The findings presented by, provided by staff or anything else that's been said this evening? Commissioner Bram?
Just a driveway issue on page seven in the full paragraph. Closer to the paragraph, there is a, they have separate, that should have a period.
Five lines, five lines up. Uh. Parking areas proposed and not connected, period. They have separate driveways. A period is needed there. Okay. Anything else? Motion on the table, deny. Based on the narrative and the findings as presented by staff, which again encapsulate the discussion we previously had last meeting. And will be supplemented from tonight's discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands passes unanimously. So, slide item for is the voting compliance application is the intervenor's petition. I think it's worth instead of going through it, last few times, get a motion on the table and kind of vet it a little more as we do in the normal court. So may I have a motion on this item about the intervenor? Motion being either that the intervenor has satisfied the standard of section one to A dash nineteen or has not satisfied the standards in section. Commissioner Braun?
Correct.
There's seconds? Commissioner Harrison, thank you. Commissioner Braun?
Okay, so between the intervenors experts and the, um, and the town engineer, it's clear, number one, that there was a lack of information feeding into this. And my understanding is that eight dash thirty E does not govern a twenty twenty nineteen intervention. So, there's not the evidence, provided us information. I think the burden should always be provided with information, so we're informed before we make a decision. Um, but certainly with the twenty two dash, um, dash nineteen, okay, the, certainly the applicant's winner, I suppose, he granted the intervention. And it went up on appeal. Either party appealing, the person who proved we were wrong, I believe. So, let's say we grant some allegations, but all of them, the intervenor could appeal, the applicant could appeal. In either instance, I believe the burden would be them to prove the appeal. So, I believe the burden is not on to prove that, that, to prove that we were right. Which means the, um, I guess the intervening party, but also the applicant providing enough information to make well sound environmental decisions. I don't believe we did. They did because we have two expert witnesses who state that there was inadequate testing. With inadequate testing, you don't know what's went under the ground. Both Mr. Hurley and Mr. Trinkus pointed out much more test pit, more location. Um, the test pit did not appear to be known. There was really only two. Um, there are other defects. Mr. Hurley pointed out underneath the test pit, um, systems, the unit management check, there had to be nine inches, there was only six inches. They both pointed out, you don't know the height of groundwater during high water season. Don't really know if you have an adequate separation between the bottom of the basement and the top of the groundwater during high water season. Without knowing that, you don't know what when you, for example, place that area, coming cool under the ground, the basement, what that absorption capability is. And also the quality, because, um, I don't think Mr. Hurley mentioned this as much, but Mr. Trinkus did that the quality, he did not feel was completely, uh, uh, fixed, or, you know, having the talking move by accommodating separator and both of the water items. When, when it goes into, for example, if, if you don't know exactly in the soil, if the gravel is, it will just float through, it's really being cleaned up. And then it's going to end, um, infiltrated into the groundwater, up to Southside Street, up to Long Island Sound. So whatever pollution is there, whether it's basement, if the basement, um, little drainage thing overflows, it's somehow down the groundwork, it's going to be dirty. Or even if it comes off the roof, he pointed that out as well. Uh, that roof, water coming up is not clean water. It has things in it, but it's dirty and it's not adequately cleaned. Um, Mr. Hurley pointed out, but it's a very tight site. If they do dig down, they find out that groundwater is higher than the floor, there's really no room, move to do any kind of field adjustments to, to fix the problem. Because it's completely built out. Uh, we have things are different now than perhaps five and a half years ago. I mean, climate change is changing our weather patterns. That's when the, by Malone's room, not really on the site, one of them. We can't necessarily rely, and even this one was done, I think, in twenty nineteen. Was not during heat and hot waters here. So, what Mr. Trinkus is pointing out is that non point source solution, um, does exist and it will end up in the, the drainage system will not work. And it will end up overflowing into our groundwater or surface water and ending up in Southside Creek and then in, um, Long Island Sound. They both improve the DEEP manual would not be followed. It has to be captured and treated, not just held. Just me to DEEP goals of, goals of reducing pollutant loads. The holding tank out of the basement is not adequate, will go close, will have to be water, and that's really what's happening basically throughout the process. And the, the expert of, Trinkus pointed out that the engineering plant camp or something, during a, I'm not really with that, they want, I guess. Um. No assessment value of pollutants going up or not, probably gravel or broken pavement, oh, I'm saying right now? They didn't do a full assessment of the present ability of the, um, situation that is now of how it would handle pollutants. Being that it's eighty-five percent impervious, it's moving to a hundred percent impervious surface. So, the conclusion was, if you don't know how the current system is now, how can you be better? The point is that it will be better. Maybe volume will be better, but, but the quality might not be better. And whatever comes out will end up in Southside Creek and Long Island Sound. There's a lot of discussion with the three foot versus twenty-four inch separation. But again, without having adequate testing, you don't know how much, um, you don't have a, you don't know preparation you're going to have. I think the whole thing for me comes down to not enough information because inadequate testing. And I believe that, that should have been provided, I know eight dash three, but I also feel experts that there was inadequate testing to build this according to how its plans are, especially developing contingencies. And that's what, that we satisfy, um, the intervention statute, which is and I think Mr. Trinkus pointed out that this project, this is likely to cause unreasonable, the natural resources of the public trust in the local resource states. I don't know which allegations we put it all on there, but I haven't even touched these yet.
I do believe it, and I think your answer is affirmative, but I do believe intervenors, uh, burdened to prove, I'm a hundred percent. Um. Five, five claim, as in the narrative. Um. So, question I guess I have is, um, the last hearing, uh, three, four, um. Question, second.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I had comments on the
Yeah, I just want I would jump ahead. No, no, it's okay. I wanted to, before we went, I wanted
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no.
Okay.
Their move
Okay.
Kind of flush out with you. Um, third and the fourth, some of the last time, areas where, um, the intervenor met the, met the standard. Talk about the standards where that has, that's definitely, yeah, a, let Commissioner Harrison talk about, mention that, right? Okay. Um, I, the fourth has to do with groundwater, ground, high groundwater, lack of, uh, testing with are you, someone check, one, five, and in, in your application, um, you, you claim that the intervenor meets any of those, we can kind of be clear moving forward.
If the burden is on, well, okay, I believe the I think the burden is on the applicant. I, I believe the intervenor has known that if we do twenty-two dash nineteen, burden of proof standards, which is, that there's substantial evidence in the records to support it, and we determine the credibility. So I believe all five, but, yeah, okay, and all of my comments kind of, some of them are kind of overlapping, but, yeah, so non point source solution, um, um, you know, what a management system, yeah.
Motion in town, so it's all five, um, I mean, as you said, it was an adult expert. And you are crediting the expert of the intervenor and the, the town engineer were appropriate. I'm not sure he dealt with everything, but when he appropriate, he sided with the intervenor.
And the intervenor pointed out, that greater harm.
And you, the evidence that they was sufficient, not just the matter of eight, the applicant didn't, the evidence that the intervenor put to us was persuasive of that the burden in your mind.
Yes, and when you do a twenty-two dash nineteen, you say, correct, that's to show that, um, it's reasonably likely, really unreasonable, um, impairment of our public trust.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, and thank you, Commissioner Braun, for that very extensive, uh, commentary. I, I, again, I would just briefly say that I don't think there's a reason that this application should have ever been filed or before us, before resolving this WPTA approval. You know, I don't think we should cut to our judgment for the WPTAs. Um, the applicant has shown adequate sewer capacity. I think the system would be at risk causing, uh, our town great harm and our water resources great harm. And, um, I would, you know, basically act like what Mr. Braun said. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. And Commissioner, uh, Francis.
Um. I have notes that probably flow into what you said, Commissioner Bram, um, Commissioner Braun. Um, that Mr. Trinkus testified that large commercial roofs are not, do not have clean runoff. The proposed design only removes twenty percent of the, eight, twenty-eight percent of the solids, and it does not meet the EEP pollution goals of removing eighty percent. That water moves more quickly through sand and gravel soil, which this is. The only treatment practice is a separator, which does a poor job of infiltration. The increased nutrient loads impact tidal groundwater, which makes the soil more exposed to wave action. The DEEP manual says that runoff must be captured and treated and address the first inch particularly. If the gallery has questioned how the water was going to be treated. The permeability tests were allegedly done. Where are the results? He had no idea of the infiltration rates and no test results. Um, the pollutant loading analysis evaluation should, it should be existing versus the constructed site finality, and this application was not in compliance. I'm, I'm sure this reflects everything that you said, and it, it's just further evidence of a completely lax um, of facts by the applicant. And a poor quality application.
Thank you. Any other member, any other, any other member? Commissioner Levy?
Just to summarize, that there was, uh, the intervenor cited, uh, more than enough, uh, you know, credible evidence uh, from which we could reasonably find, um, that the allegations, their petition had been, uh, supported by the and that there is a, uh, reasonable likelihood that this, uh, project would have of polluting effect impairing or destroying the public trust in the air, water, natural resources.
Thank you. And I think one extra thing, um, I'll add for anybody else to supplement is, um, the extra finding. I echo the, I think I echo the sentiments provided. I think at least certainly the petition for claims three and four are very strong. And I do believe the rest of the claims, one, two, and five, uh, as provided in the narrative, um, when viewing the evidence, noting the competing experts, the battling experts, uh, the credible evidence is on the intervenor's side for, um, the, uh, what, reasonably likely to have the effect of unreasonably polluting, impairing, or destroying the public trust in the air, water, or state. Um, the extra finding we need to go I believe that, I find, there's no feasible or prudent, prudent alternatives with the reasonable requirements of the health, safety, and welfare. Um, as we've discussed, this is, there's not, there's not on this site. Uh, I, I think maybe, as I said, this is like putting ten pounds of potatoes in a five pound sack. It's not as if you can, around if there were issues, um, as it is, we've had changes in the, in the application, I think actually towards stormwater development, storm, uh, water protection, if I'm not mistaken, but a lot of changes, uh, to this application, very, a tendency of this application. And there's not, there's not much to be if they, we, as they run into these things, these problems, what more to remedy? It's a, a project that's the site. And I don't, I cannot, I do not see any feasible or prudent alternatives consistent with the reasonable requirement of health, safety, and welfare. And I believe we asked of the intervenor's expert, if I'm not mistaken, he, uh, agreed with that sentiment and in that respect, in that vein, I credit his testimony. Um. So, uh, is anybody, is any other member of the, wish to be heard, not just the, the first part, likely effect, but also the, uh, no feasible improved alternatives? As, go down there, commit, down the line, Commissioner, uh, Harrison.
I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with that.
Yes, that's LeBron and Second, Harrison, and I have not heard anything to the contrary. Yes. Yes, and with respect to this, the narrative, the finding that you amended, as you just said, for claims one to five. And the, the discussion we have had, the, our decision. Is that fair? Notting, everybody else seems to be approval. Anything else, members of the commission, or can we put this to a vote? The vote is that the intervenor has established standard section twenty-two A dash nineteen uh, for the reasons for all the five, the petition, um, as we've discussed. The vote is, um, the intervenor's application. So all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Uh, thank you, members of the staff, for, uh, the great summary and the help in this. Um, and thank you to the members of the commission, who spent a lot of time on it, I think it was. Um, well, well done in almost every aspect of it, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go. So, next item for old businesses, fourteen eighty-five, Stilson Road, three subdivision application of Stand Dollar Development LLC for two lots in an A zone. Mr. West?
Jim? Can I, can I move the phone closer to you? I can't hear you. Unless you want to move the mic closer to you.
Thank you. Okay, the subject parcel is on the southeasternly side of Stilson Road, approximately four hundred feet from the intersection with Mill Plain Road. The site is currently zero point seven four four acres in size and has an existing single family dwelling that is currently undergoing renovations. This proposal seeks to divide the parcel into two lots, one with a lot size of twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-seven feet, which would contain the existing dwelling, and the other with eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-two square feet, uh, which would have a new house constructed. The lots comply with the area and shape requirements of the residence A zone in which they are located. In order to establish a proper sightline for the proposed driveway, clearance of trees and low growing vegetation, uh, within the proposed lot number three and within the town right of way is required. Uh, previously at the, during the hearing, um, there was, you heard testimony that this had been reviewed and approved by the tree warden for this work. It was also requiring two shade trees in the public right of way per lot, provided those locations don't interfere with the required sightline. You have in front of you a written, I, I emailed it, but you have the, um, confirmation from the town engineer that the sightline is adequate, uh, to, and is suggesting, uh, conditions provided that, the condition is placed on the final subdivision and noted on the subdivision map that no landscaping over twelve inches in height and no structures be allowed within the site distance triangle, uh, unless approved by the engineering department and tree warden. If you have any questions about that particular, um, response or exhibit, I'm, I am prepared to answer that. That is all I have at this point, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. West. May I have a motion? Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion denied without, um, pending further information.
Motion is denied without prejudice. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Francis. Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. I, I put together some statements after we, re-listened to, um, here in the last day, um, and I've driven by the site. I think this is arguably one of the most dangerous curves in town, and it's heavily traveled at all speeds, exceeds supposed speed limits. Um, in addition to being on a very steep hill, there are a lot of wildlife crossings, and there's a traffic hazard that creates, that, that is created, um, in this area. Um, I personally don't believe that the applicant has showed their adequate sightline. Um, based on the evidence, I didn't hear from the police nor the engineer explicitly say that the tree removal would provide adequate sightlines. Uh, they basically endorse eliminating the trees, but they didn't really guarantee would, um, bring adequate sightlines. Um, the police's comments were fairly vague to me and unclear on whether the result will be putting a driveway at the exact spot the curve would be actually beneficial to the town. Um, we don't have any idea what the traffic looks like or any accident reports. Um, I think a traffic study would provide actual speeds, volumes, and accident histories, and then we would have an actual sightline requirement and the ability to determine if the sightline is adequate. I think it's really important for us, um, as the town planning and zoning commission, to be fully informed before rendering a decision that could really permanently create an unsafe, um, situation. Um, the neighbor who spoke before us, I think he made a really good suggestion. Let's get more information, you know, let's ensure that this is safe. Um, so that's, uh, why I want to put this on hold, if you will.
Commissioner Francis?
I, I agree with those statements, and my concern too is the driveway appears to be right on the curve, which I regard as one of the most dangerous curves in town, and I live off Mill Plain Road, so I'm on Stilson in lot. And I like Commissioner Harrison's suggestion of, of police study, uh, traffic study at least to determine the speeds that people are driving up this hill. Um, and I'm not, it's not clear from this drawing where the, um, driveway on lot number one is compared to this. Is it, is it right next to it? This one certainly looks like it's right on the curve. Yeah, I think that might be it there.
This lot?
This is the one we're talking about.
Right, right. Where's the proposed driveway?
It says garage and
No, it's here, it's, it's, right, right at the apex of the curve.
It is right at the curve here. And where's, um, the other one that the gentleman was concerned about this?
The neighbor that testified lives here.
One. And where's his driveway? The plan doesn't show it.
It's
Oh, where? Um. I wonder, where is this? This is the house that's being remodeled.
Correct.
And
Your driveway is
I wonder if it would be possible to flip the house and the driveway so it's more down Stilson Road. Not my call, but it looks like it would be a lot safer.
Again, I, I thought, from my recollection of the testimony, was they chose that location because it's right at the apex, so they could both directions will begin would potentially affect the
That, that is the ideal site, right on the curve.
Correct.
Commissioner Harrison wanted to supplement.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, our subdivision regulations require the applicant to apply evidence of the development that will not adversely impact public safety, and that's section one point one, point one five. Do you want me to read that in the record?
It's up to you.
Um, other, um, given that other evidence shall be submitted establishing that the property be, to be subdivided in is of such character that it can be used for building purposes without danger or health or the public safety. Um, section one point one, point five, one point five goes on to say that any proposed street shown on a subdivision, if the plan is in harmony with the existing or proposed principles or and the plan is in harmony with the existing or proposed principal thoroughfares shown on the master plan, especially in regard to safe intersections with such thoroughfares and the adequate sightlines for individual driveways have been provided. Um, two point four, um, under lot size narration, the lots shall be of such character that they can be used for building purposes without being care to the health and safety of the public or the occupants. Want to add that for that into the record?
What is it, what is the second section?
Uh, two point four.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I respectfully disagree with the, uh, proposal to defer it or get additional studies. I, I speak for, um, ten years' experience living several hundred yards from this corner, traversing it on a regular basis, and there's no doubt in my mind that removing the trees, which, uh, are the biggest impediment to the sightline, uh, would be a vast improvement, um, to the area, would actually make it safer, and actually putting the driveway where it's proposed at the apex would be the ideal spot as far as the sightlines being able to be seen or see, uh, vehicles approaching from either direction. So, to my mind, uh, clearing out the shrubs, uh, and trees in accordance with the, uh, town engineer and the tree warden's proposal, uh, is a vast improvement, and based upon that, I would object to, uh, the proposal to defer it and in fact, get this done sooner than later.
Can we, well, let me see if anybody else, I have something, uh, some comments, so go, Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I read the comments. And, and still, still concerned. And, um, we're figuring a step of approval. Um, they're saying it's a process, and he said, one, one, we actually know the actual speed, the speed of the car that's on the road there.
The cars are so fast. So, we don't know, we don't know that, because we don't have information. Um, you know, there's...
Some of the high grass even, and, uh, one, one...
Same section.
No, no, that means that it's not, it's becoming an area of concern. There's no step of approval.
Their engineer's department.
So, um, I would like to have a traffic report, even though I know five units. So, we're, we're... And, um, you know, the first... Provide us with enough information, so we feel that it's a safe condition for the town. I drive on that, for all the top, the, the wildlife progress, that is a whole, a whole lot of, like, pictures. And, um, um, hazards, stop, stop, wildlife on the road, because there's no big area where it's across the road. I think there's only, only a side on the inside. And we have a neighbor that actually knows how, how difficult it is to work there. He just said, he didn't, he didn't, and what that, that, so, I think the burden of the application, even in subdivision, I think. And, and, I actually do not necessarily agree with, with, with basically destroying a, 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 you know.
I don't think you, you approve a house with trees, you know, and, and I, I don't. I, I always like to tell them we're gonna retain this, because we shouldn't be losing what they provide, which is, we're gonna tell you habitat, water, air, and air cleansing, so, not seeing, seeing any indication. I also don't know, I believe, a very, a very steep.
What did the lieutenant say? I couldn't find it in the, uh.
It's one way. It wasn't very explicit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, but I'm not expecting treatises from police, uh, lieutenants that are asking, you know, you know, and they ask, is the sideline met? Yes, the sideline's met. I mean, I'm not expecting them to. So from, yeah, I didn't see this in the materials. I looked online, um, from, oh, Lieutenant Irizar, Irizari. Based on the permission granted by the tree warding and your ongoing work with our engineering department, we fully support your assessment to improve the line of sight. Okay. And the spec- the special division traffic safety, fully support your efforts. As I said, stated earlier, I believe this proposal will increase the safety. Okay. It doesn't really say that the sideline is met as opposed to just improving the condition, but it is. But our engineer, I think, is agreeing with the methodology. Um, I'm not sure what additional information is needed, what evidence in the record we have to contradict what was presented by the applicant and I think confirmed by our engineering departments. Um, considering we're sitting in our administrative capacity, I'm not sure if we have really a discretion in this respect uh, as outlined by, um, Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Francis, Harrison, um. I'm of the opinion that this, in our administrative capacity, we need to approve this application as it meets the our regulations and improves the sideline issue. Um, I, I just don't know what else, what other information is being requested. I don't think we, we can't ask for a traffic, I don't know the traffic study needed because it's just a matter of sightlines. So what's trip generation, you know, now the ha- out of the single family house going to show, it's sightlines. I mean, but you go by sightlines, I think, in this case. Um, I, and I would go, I mean, unless. You go by sightlines, I think, um, I think.
Okay. So for the record, our, we just had another technical difficulty, but we're back on. Uh, nothing was said substantively. As I understand it, I was left, um, the last thing I needed to say before I cut off was I would support this applica- I would support the approval of this application. Commissioner Francis.
A question for you, Mr. Went.
You're good.
Um. Is there going to be a, like a four foot tree belt and then a six foot sidewalk or something? Ten, the ten feet of this will be totally clear? Before, he said there was going to be a retaining wall, totally on private property. The end of this hearing was very compact.
And Commissioner Francis brings up a point I don't think we discussed is sidewalks would be placed in for additional safety to pedestrians.
Yes.
The distance from the edge of the pavement to the property line varies. It's approximately 10 feet over most of the front and put it down at the, the exit.
And is there a tree belt with trees? Is that what Mr. Fitzpatrick said? I didn't quite hear the grass belt between the road and the sidewalk is usually is three or four feet of.
Well, if you look at your exhibit that you have from Mr. Hurley, he is suggesting that the area outlined in yellow, highlighted in yellow, is the area that needs to be cleared of any vegetation in excess of 12 inches. So there's, if there's a street tree required in there, it would have to be placed in such a way that it doesn't interfere with that, uh, that sightline area.
Oh, so it will not be out beyond the retaining wall?
I'm not sure there's a retaining wall, but the.
He said there was.
The tree ward is requesting two trees per lot in the right of way, but that has to be judged against whether or not that's going to interfere with, uh, with the sightline pullback.
That's the kind of thing that isn't very clear. Because you can't place trees on a sidewalk. There, there'd have to be a tree belt.
I'm not understanding if it's a smoke shelter or a strip of swing.
Yes.
Um, again, that's, that's typically there's two feet between the face of the curb and the edge of the sidewalk. But whether or not trees can be in there, as long as they're not interfering with that sightline, that's fine. There's not a, the retaining wall is
Private property.
On the side property line, not, not between the house and the street.
Oh, oh, okay. Good, very condensed there at the end.
Are you all set? Commissioner Francis?
Yeah.
Okay. Good job. Commissioner Braun. Thought there was somebody.
Does any of that yellow portion exist on the neighbor's property? It looks like a mine, hard to sell.
No, it extends across their frontage, but if you look at that exhibit, there's a darker.
That's the neighbor's?
There's kind of a, a, the property like kind of comes to a point.
Okay.
Those darker lines are the boundary of that adjacent neighbor's parcel, the area between that thicker highlighted line, I mean, there's still some roads in the town right away.
And, okay, so because if any of the trees that were required to get sightline were on the neighbor's property, then it couldn't be, couldn't be enforced.
Correct.
Um, but I, I don't think Mr. Hurley gave a conclusion on adequate sightline. I think he liked the methodology, but there's no conclusion here of what the sightline requirement is because nobody did the, the traffic study. We don't know what the actual speed is. We always go by the actual speed of the cars, not by the speed limit. Nobody goes 25 on that road. People go 35 or 40 on that road. And I think that without knowing that, we don't know what the sightline requirements are, so we don't know if the sightline requirements are met. And it's, it's, you know, I know it's a subdivision reg, but there are multiple subdivision regs which talk about safety. I, I think you mentioned some of them. Um, I'm just gonna, I don't know which ones you mentioned, but 1.1, yeah, I got 1.15, 1.1.15.
Yeah, 1.11, 1.112.
1.1.15 says, "Other evidence shall be submitted establishing that the property is of such character to be used um, without danger to public safety in, in relevant parts." That shall is mandatory language. That puts the owner, um, the applicant, not us. Um, and then down at the end of that section, you might have read this, um, that, um, any proposed street shown on the central, that's a street, but they, they're talking about safety. Um, they're talking about safe intersections with such thoroughfares and adequate sightlines for individual driveways have been provided and between four, I don't know if you mentioned that one. The lots have, yeah, have to be of character. They can be used for building purposes without danger to the health and safety of the public or the accident. And then like, we could have requested it. We didn't, but that doesn't mean the owner changes from the burden of being on the applicant to prove to us that it's safe. And I don't see how you can do it without doing a study where we know what the actual speed is and the volume of traffic that goes through that intersection. So you're taking what's simple and you're adding a driveway. Taking away something that is bad, but I don't consider it bad, but I guess it does obstruct, but then you're adding a driveway um, right there, which adds a whole other variable into it. So I don't see how we can approve it without knowing what the sightline is, especially on this curve, which is not just a sharp curve, but it's also on a hill and at a wildlife crossing.
I think they provided a sightline calculation.
I don't, I didn't see that.
I mean, I think, am I missing something, Mr. Went?
How do they do it without knowing the speed?
I think they go by, what, um, the speed limit plus up to 80 percentile or something like that? I mean, I, it's not my area of expertise. I've gotten along where I hear that it's, that's like, there's a cer- there's a standard calculation. I think that was provided to us.
Well, they're showing the, they had 200 feet sightline. That's not, I don't believe that to be predicated on any, um, speed data other than the, as stated, the, the regulatory standard is adequate sightline, um, to the satisfaction of the town engineer.
But we're the ones who make the decision and we determine what we consider safe.
No, I think, but I think in this case, once we're in our administrative capacity and the regulation is the satisfaction of the engineer, I'm not sure that we have that discretion or that, yeah, that discretion. Um, but I, I mean, I, listen, he does, the engineer doesn't come out and say, I agree, or he has prop, well, has proper sightlines. I agree with the methodology in relation to the site distance map and calculation. In order to maintain the site distance profile, he gives some um, conditions of that need to be met in order to can do the site. I mean, to me, the engineering department is opine that it's satisfied with the sightline calculation provided by the applicant. Um, if you want to table this, to ask that more directly of him, just him, probably, yeah, of him.
I would like to have actual speed taken so we can get a better idea of what sightline requirement is. And it might be too late in the game to do it now to get new information after the hearing closed, but.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
And this, yeah. Um, so I mean, that's, which brings us back to the motion, that issue, motion to deny without prejudice uh, for them to potentially submit that. Um, that's what the commission decides.
I, I have a question logistically. Is there a way of, um, doing that and having it be in the same hearing process or would, like, is there a way of doing that of getting, reopening it or getting the information and allowing it to be added into the hearing process? So then you'd have to reopen it for public comment and everything else.
Yeah, realistically, if you're asking for speed study.
Well, I'd just, yeah, I'd like to know.
No, I, I, in my opinion, I think that you would need to go back to a, to a new hearing to accomplish that. The other question is that I don't know the answer to, that I think the chairman was just alluding to, is a, um, further articulation from the town engineer as to whether speed is a factor in the sightline distance for a single family driveway. It is for an intersection certainly, um, but this is a.
And this location, because we're talking about.
Right, well, this is a, right, a single family, um, driveway and whether a speed is, whether or not speed analysis is a factor in determining whether that sightline wants to.
I guess, so when we talk about 15 Unco, we're talking about, we need to look at local characteristics right there. So speed might not be a factor, you know, on Mill Plain Road, but it might be a factor on Stilton Road, where that curve and the hill is. But yeah, I would like to get more information.
Is it worth then tabling to make that request of the engineer? And that's, we may be in a similar, similar position, um, but it might work, might be worth the two weeks to see what the engineer comes back with, um, as opposed to doing anything more substantive than that. Commissioner Breaman, is that?
That, that's fair. Uh, I, I wouldn't want anyone to make a decision one way or the other on the basis that the town engineer email wasn't clear enough.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison, it was your, I think it was your motion. Any thoughts on the tabling?
Um, I think that's a regional request right now.
Okay. And who is the second? Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Okay. So modify your motion to table then? Modify your motion from the denial without prejudice to tabling.
Sure, but I would withdraw my previous motion and, um, my motion to table this.
Where's the Commissioner Braun's motion?
So is mine. And he'll pending further clarification from the town engineer to see.
Yeah, I think just ta- I think it's clear that that's what we're going to be asking, but I mean, tabling with that is fine.
Yeah, I mean, I just reiterate that I believe that our subdivision regulations, 1.1, 1.12, doesn't allow us to ask for a traffic study. This is, I don't believe this is simply administrative or as right for the applicant. I think we do have that, that right to, to ask for further detail.
Well, we can, and maybe the extra, the extra thing will be adding, um, a request to either staff or town attorney as to uh, what our, what our discretion is, uh, and it's, we can do that. That's fine too.
Thank you.
You approve that amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Anything to discuss on tabling or can we, I think enough is going to start right?
Did you spend a little speed study because of John? I think it would really help.
Well, we're not going to be able to do a speed study. It's going to be asking the, the engineer to, to more clearly articulate his position on the, the sightline as the, as the, well, sightline methodology is presented already and ask, uh, staff or attorney, uh, town attorney, uh, for more clarification about, uh, what discretion we have, speed studies being request, demanded of, uh, uh, speed studies. What else? Was that it? Traffic studies? I kind of think you have what I need, Mr. Went, right?
Situation.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Seven to table, uh, so that's unanimous. That brings us to, I think, compliances. Yep. 11 Unco Road zoning compliance application of Isla and Co. Fairfield LLC for a seasonal canopy enclosure of outdoor dining. Mr. Went?
Okay.
Can you hear him? Start again.
So this is, this is just a restaurant in 11 Unco Road, it's a ballpark where you're at, uh, it's immediately, if you're looking at the community theater, it's the restaurant to the right, the right side of the marquee here, the old post road town on the left. Uh, and, uh, this particular restaurant is on right-hand side. In January of 2021, admission through 790 square feet of outdoor dining. The applicant is proposing a 10 by 30 canvas enclosure, facilitate greater weather protective seeing area in the months from October to April, at which time enclosure would be approved. It should be noted that the entirety of the existing outdoor, entirety of the existing outdoor dining is on town property and within approved lease and should you find favor of this application, plus what needs approval to be selected, we would have that need to. So that is all I have and that's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on the item?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Commissioner Francis? Second from Commissioner Kep. Commissioner Francis?
Now, this is a, um, the, a, a request for the opposite of what you're. This is a request for the opposite approval of what we usually approve. Outdoor dining. This is for outdoor dining from the period we don't allow outdoor dining.
Well, yes and no. Effectively what they're saying is they want 300 square feet of what will be effectively indoor space. It's outdoor space during the outdoor dining season, but this canvas enclosure would make it weather protected was a indoor space for the months between October and April.
Um. Now, what's, what is the square footage of the restaurant area inside from?
Inside, of course, like 400 square feet.
And they'd like to have an almost 800 foot outdoor.
Well, they already have, that what they're looking to do is enclose 300 of that during the winter months.
I thought you said 790 outdoor.
The total patio was enclosed 790.
Okay.
And they're looking to enclose a 10 by 30 foot portion of that.
Okay. Okay, so that's not quite as extensive as I had. It's just 10 by 30.
Projects 10 feet away from the face of the building and with a 30.
The whole width.
Correct.
And one door on the left.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's another door on the right. Whether there's another doors that you require. Um, I don't know if another door will be required on the other side, but, um, it's essentially a 10-foot canvas projection, um, for the entire width of the store.
But it's only, um, protruding 10 feet.
Projects 10, yes, correct. 10 feet up.
No, because when I went over for a site visit, the, the person I talked to who was not the manager said that it was going to project, you know how they have steel planters?
Right.
Know, like five of them. He said he thought it was going all the way out through the, let's say 12 across, that it was going to cover the whole side, but that's not true. It's just 10 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Um. What, what are all the other restaurants going to say when they see this?
I, I have no way of answering that.
I don't think nobody can.
If they get some news too.
It's a fair question, but I, I, you know, I don't know what the, what the, what the nominal things, if that's your concern, um, maybe.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kep?
Um. I think it would be a welcome addition to have more seating available year round. Uh, I do like the fact that it is only 10 feet. And in this particular area, it's not impacting sidewalks as much as some of the other outdoor dining areas intended. Yeah, so, um, this will have the least amount of negative impact coming here as far as approaching, um, public space. Now, is there lease on that public property year round? So I'm just thinking like they're paying for that, that space even when they can't use it.
Right, but that, my understanding of the lease is that the rent they pay is, is structured. They pay more during the outdoor season than they do with the non-season, and that will need to be revisited. And provision of that, what they pay will have to be revisited as, as part of this. So we did discuss it and there was a view of the, uh, first level of his office that it's kind of a, they didn't want to take up the, uh, the consideration of amending the lease unless they knew that there, there was approval for the concept of this.
I have a question, um, this, I got the shirt from the packet, but news reader, how should they pay for this, for their additional 300 square feet or 400 square?
I, I don't know what the, what the terms of the lease will ultimately end up being. Um, I didn't. The lease was approved back in January of last year. I don't recall, but the terms of the.
No, I don't blame them. It's just, I've been there. It's a nice restaurant. It's pretty small, so I, I don't, you know, not, don't argue with why the additional space. Thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
I have a question. Um, I just scrolled through the regulations. Our only regulation has to do with parking spaces with respect to outdoor dining. There's no other regulations for outdoor dining, size, month. That's all in the, for select persons, like executive order or something from a pandemic, right? About size, tents, heating, things like that.
Well.
Dimensions and things like that.
You're correct. It's chiefly the, 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 our regulations presently allow related to parking, 150 amount of additional patient space outside without any additional parking. Beyond 150, it's the standard one space for 40 square feet. Um, standard conditions of approval that this commission has imposed on applications for outdoor dining has to do with if it was moving the furniture in the off season, they're not supposed to have any additional signage in, uh, outdoor dining.
I thought we had all those, but I can't find them.
It's not, you're, you're correct, that that is not articulated in our regulation, um, but we, uh, that is something we can, we can certainly.
So, okay, so I'm looking at the, um, the town COVID outdoor restaurant sidelines from May 2020. Does that still apply? That says you can't have a closed in tent. You can't have heaters inside the tent. They've got all these other rules.
This is not a COVID protocol application for enclosure before, that, uh, so all of that, whatever.
Doesn't matter.
Heating systems maybe would have to certainly satisfy the building code and fire regulations.
Okay.
Uh, independent though.
So we don't care if it's closed in, and I don't remember how the other ones were in the winter. Were they closed in or not closed in? I thought they were not closed in. I don't know if that matters because you're going to count.
I'm not aware they enclose tents.
Because this is closed in. This is enclosed.
Restaurants in the Southport has a tent.
Oh, it's closed in? Yeah. This, this one is, is enclosed.
Yeah, it'd be a complete, it'd be a three-sided enclosure with building on the fourth side.
And that doesn't violate any of our sort of internal protocols for outdoor dining? I haven't looked at it recently.
Well, it's effectively going to transform some of the seasonal outdoor dining to indoor dining in most off-season months. And then the intention is to move it, so you'll allow outdoor again come April.
So this will allow pretty much any restaurant, if they have the space, if they have outdoor dining, to enclose a portion of it, um, and use it all year round, which maybe is a thing. Yeah.
Depending on whether or not that they have parking of it, it's, that are 350 seasonal, then they wouldn't be able to do so.
If they already have the outdoor, they could do this most likely. If we start approving this, then we will be approving everyone, I imagine.
We have other examples of outdoor dining panios that have some approved enclosures.
Okay. I'm sure we do.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. Just, um, now we have this application in front of the, in front of us from the Economic Development Commission to amend sections of our outdoor dining. How would this compete with that or, or not?
It would not compete with that. What the proposal that's coming forth is a proposal to expand the 150 feet to a greater distance to help facilitate, um, you can relax, if you will, the provisions for outdoor dining and, and in some ways maybe allow us to, to make permanent some of the, give the applicant a chance to make permanent some of the things able to do under COVID with the the premise, uh, that those expanded opportunities didn't result in negative impacts. Um, so which speaks to the concept of, perhaps there's an opportunity to expand that without necessitating the need to seek approval in this only one field. But in short, I don't think this is in conflict with that proposal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Breaman?
Uh, the application appears to comply with our regulations and, uh, you know, the design of the, uh, the enclosure for whatever it's worth seems faithful to me and in line with other restaurants, uh, in town and elsewhere in Fairfield County. I think that, um, it'll be, you know, a, a welcome addition, as Commissioner Kip said, and, um, the economics of it or the wisdom of it, uh, from the town's perspective as a policy matter are going to be passed on by the RTM. So I'm in favor of, of approving the compliance application.
Commissioner Leedy?
Not worried about the floodgates. I'm looking at a single application. I'm not worried about outdoor dining because once it closes, it's indoor dining, uh, so therefore we start. So we can be fine once it's indoors, similar to, let's say, something like the old Toto restaurant, uh, there's precedent to town uh, and based on this specific application. Yeah, I would concur that it complies with what our regulations are. It's untastefully. It's not requesting the entirety of the patio. Um, and I don't believe it impair, it'd be, it's going to be taken down during, uh, on season time, but it's just really for off-season. Uh, I don't think it would impair any of the condition to the historic area like we've compared, uh, in the past. Like I said, it looks untastefully. Um, we can't, we do look at these one by one. Don't necessarily set precedent that we always want to be consistently in fair. Um, but in this application, I think it applies with our regulations. Uh, and it's good for the area, it's fine for the area and I, I would support. Any other comments? Whether to revoke, motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. These seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Moving to public hearing. All eight oh one Post Road Special Permit Application of Saucy LLC pertaining to additions and alterations to establish a restaurant used as shown on plan to tile Pizza Co. Restaurant Bar dated July fifth, twenty twenty-two and prepared by Samuel Gardner Market Bank. This is a license.
Sounds true.
A few, few jokes, I saw.
Excuse him.
Yeah, probably. I'll wait right back, pretty soon.
Yeah.
All right, uh, whenever the applicant's ready to proceed, you can go ahead.
I'm, uh, did the chairman choose this? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, the chairman just had to use the restroom, so I'm stepping in temporarily.
Right, go.
All right, all right, good evening, my name's John, I'm an attorney with an office at one forty-seven Broad Street in Gilbert, um, here tonight on behalf of Beacon Hill Real Beholding, which is the owner of the subject property, and Saucy LLC, which is the applicant and tenant of the subject property, which is located at eight oh one Post Road, obviously at the corner of South Benson, in where the D C D zone, the property supplies with just under ten thousand square feet and, as you all know, is occupied by a former gas station repair facility that has uh seen better days. Uh, just in place, this was a grass delivery in twenty twenty-one, the Z B A granted several variances, including a variance of the parking requirement of, of allowing ten spaces where twenty spaces is required, we are not relying on that parking variance in any way per your direction through the special permit application. And as you know, uh, Saucy uh submitted a special permit application last July, the commission conducted a public hearing this September, and on October twelfth, after very careful deliberations through which the members were both very complimentary of the proposed improvements to the building, and you all expressed the need to face lift what has become clearly an eyesore, the commission approved that application with certain conditions. The first condition is that, that you did not approve of a reduction in the ten-foot setback of the parking spaces, and the second condition was, quoting, "The revised site plan must be permitted showing parking spaces conforming to the required setback and any required adjustments to the plans to conform to resulting number of parking spaces." Those are your two conditions. And as I, I think you know, that approval is now the subject of the deal by Post Spencer Corporation, which is the owner of the Bob's Plaza. So that's why we're here today, to very simply present the plan that you've already requested. For a deal, so I just wanted to talk about a couple important procedural matters. While the approval required a new plan, um, it didn't really say in what form or what context or to whom, uh, but however, during virtual deliberations, several of you mentioned to bring the plan back to us, I'm quoting, back to us, so we're, so we're back before you, but didn't say in what context. So out of caution and out of credit to the applicant and the property owner and your town attorney and your staff, we have submitted a new special permit application. Um, so that there is a entirely new public hearing, um, so we want to make sure the process is fundamentally fair, we've all been here, and that no one can claim that they've been denied an opportunity to be heard, because they have every opportunity to be here and speak on this new application.
Fair enough, can you push that microphone just a little away?
Really, excuse me, sorry.
No, I just hear a little hum, am I the only one?
No, you're in.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah, is that better?
I think so.
Okay. And I know that you've received a, a letter from Mr. Warren, but you know, contract is allocation, there's no attempt to subterfuge, no one is being denied their due process rights, in fact, it's just the opposite. And in fact, if you agree, the brief that um, uh, Joe Green, counsel for Post Spencer, submitted, this is specifically what he wanted, was the ability to um review the new plan that has come in, and so that's why this is now before you as a new special permit application. So the second procedural item I want to mention is that while this is a new application, it is obviously a direct outgrowth of the first application, and so I would respectfully request that the record from the first application be made part of this application, be made part of the record of this application as well. And then last, it stands to reason that you have approved the restaurant used for this property, and we're only here to talk about how the parking values. So now let's turn to the actual approval conditions, and you were very specific, no waiver on the ten-foot setback for the parking spaces, but also provided fine with any required justice to conform to resulting number of parking spaces, and that's precisely what we've done. Our en- engineer Jim Zuno has designed a plan, a parking plan, that is fully one hundred percent compliant with your regulations, and the result is nine parking spaces that comply with Fairfield zoning regulations. Our architect Sam Gardner has developed a internal layout plan that shows a patron floor area that requires, lo and behold, nine parking spaces. This is all as you have specifically directed, I think, Mr. Chairman, you were, the chairman at the time, this is your motion, I brought through the transcript, and you very carefully, as a group, went through this condition and very clearly articulated what it is that you wanted my client to do, and that that's exactly what we've drawn. So I want to be very clear, we're not taking advantage of the parking variance, we're not taking advantage of any reference, any parking agreements with anybody else, this is a plan that completely stands on its own, is fully compliant in terms of the, the number of parking spaces and the patron floor area. So I don't want to belabor this much more, I'm just gonna have Sam and Jim run this very quickly, but you know, this is so direct, it's so straightforward, and I'm really hopeful that, uh, given the really burning desire to get this project done, for all those who drive through the area every day, like I do, I live about a mile away, for nearby property owners, including Post Spencer, I think it's, I think it's, you know, high time for this property to be redid, and so it's no longer on the eyesore list, uh, as it has been for probably a decade or more, so let me, uh, let me introduce Jim, he can uh show you the site plan and then show how it complies, and I've got the nice spaces, and Sam can show you how the patron floor area complies.
Thank you. Yeah, you may want to switch.
Yeah.
Turning up.
Turning up.
Uh, just one question, I think, for.
Sure, yeah.
Sorry.
I don't know if you're prepared to answer this, but if, uh, this could be, uh, this current proposal, what impact would that have on the pending appeal, or would that depend on whether this is appealed, or?
I, I, I think if you were to approve this application, it, it would be subject to an appeal again, and my guess is that one of the parties, and I think that now that with all I would probably be intervening on behalf uh of the applicants, the two matters could be consolidated, um, so I don't think there's any, um, I don't think there's any confusion or any difficulty about, you know, now that this new application's been filed, because um courts consolidate cases all the time, as we all know, so I don't think there, I don't think there's any prohibition, or I don't think it creates any sort of unusual hurdle for the matter to be heard again. You know, I would, I would really hope, however, that somehow reason would prevail.
Okay.
Um, you know, call me crazy, but you know, and maybe, just maybe, you know, we can see the bigger picture and what's best for the town of Fairfield and not, and the, for the side for all the interests, but.
And I'll remind, I, I'm not sure if this was mentioned while I went to the restroom, um, the public hearing was on recommendation of our town attorney, um.
Yes, yes, and, and I agree, and, and that specifically, I, I wanted to make that clear, and, and I give her credit for di- for doing so, and also to the applicant, the property owner and staff for, for accommodating that, because we wanted this to be fundamentally fair and have, you know, and provide everyone the opportunity to be heard.
And this is by far the most, yeah, the, the, this is the most, um, the best way to do that, as opposed to coming back administratively, where we just look and do it on ourselves, the app, the public can come back um and review this as well, um, so having said that, we can, I just want to make sure that was not on the record as well as was previously at least.
Yeah.
But go ahead.
Okay.
You're up. Mr. Harrigan, you can hear? Okay.
All right, uh, Jim Zumo, Land Service Services, twelve seventy-five Post Road, uh, over here in Fairfield, um, the, I'm, I'm not gonna go too much in depth into it, except that we have, you know, we do, reduce our parking down to uh nine spaces. One of the main things I want to point out, and it, it, it was a typo in the, in a, something that I forgot to erase on the site plan, is we are now, it's a through-and-through parking, uh, parking lot, it's one, it's two-way traffic, you can come in and out, both curb cuts. Uh, the curb cuts that are uh being proposed are more or less existing, that are there, uh, they will be altered, and whatever needs to be adjusted will be approved through the state, uh, this, this application will have to go through the state, uh, or this site plan will have to be approved through the state as well. Um, w- with that being said, um, our main goal here is in the original applications, we had back-in-only spaces, we now have no more back-in-only spaces, uh, applic- uh, uh, patrons can come in from either way on the Post Road, pull into the parking lot, park, back out in any direction they so choose, and exit the parking lot. Um, garbage has been moved uh to the uh, uh, to the left-hand side of the property, uh, we, we made space over there so that they could have roll-out dumpsters, uh, we have uh abided by the ten-foot setback from the, the street line on the Post Road for landscaping and on South Benson, and also uh have, you know, more or less kept the, the uh, the um, the landscaping, so that there's some green area along that, because as you know, right now it's gray area, broken gravel, and as everybody has said, not, not built most tightly. Uh, other than that, it's kind of, it's pretty much stayed with the, with the previous application, uh, nine parking spaces to the nine, uh, nine, uh, needed for the uh, the patron floor area, two-way traffic, uh, no back-in spaces, and uh ten-foot setbacks to uh, to the main roads on Post Road and South Benson. Here for any questions? Yes?
Commissioner Braun? What, what changed about the interior of the layout?
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Sam explain that after me, yeah.
So the only thing that changed on the exterior was, you didn't really reduce, change the layout that much, you made it back and forth, in and out on the Post Road and both?
Yeah, there were some alterations of the patio in the front, um, there was, um, to hit that twenty-four foot mark between, so that we could get the two-way traffic, we had to adjust some of the green area that was in front of the building where we, where we had the delivery, uh, there's just some asphalt that's gonna have to go off, maybe a bollard put in somewhere so that, you know, for avoidance of a, the building corner, but um, uh, it, Sam will go into the interior.
Any other questions for Mr. Upside, Mr. Zumo? Zuma, thank you, sorry. Thank you.
Yep. Good evening, Sam Gardner, he's from the original road, uh, I'm the architect. We have submitted a new plan to uh Mr. Wentz, um, hopefully, yeah, so, um, this is not it. I have it here in hard copy.
Hard copy would be perfect then, because I know it's been submitted um for the record.
Right.
We got it.
So, here, I'll hold it up with you.
There you go.
The, um, and you're, you're recording this, you're able to record this?
Yes, and uh, for the record, this, what is being presented to us, uh, in hard copy has been submitted to us, uh, and available on the website, um, once, if we can find it, we'll put it up remotely as well, but um, which is fine, Mr. Harrigan, um, but just, how about just, uh, say what the date is, or the?
Uh, the date of the drawing is nine twenty-four twenty-two.
Thank you.
Um, really, the big change is uh the patron area, uh, the bar is now much bigger, so it's uh biting out more of the, of the, the space, and also the kitchen has expanded, the peak, let's call it the pizza counter, uh, has expanded, so the net of what's allowed has now conformed to uh what's required for nine, this was a back-and-forth with Jim Wentz getting, getting, you know, wrangling the square footage. Be correct?
Is that still the exterior, what's up on the screen now, uh, maybe?
That is the existing.
I'm sorry, uh, up on the screen there is?
That is the existing. So no, that, that's proposed.
That's, oh.
That is, I'm sorry. That, that's really.
Turn by, okay. No worries.
Yeah, that, that is the, that is the proposed, that's a rendering of the proposed. Basically, what you're getting is an addition to the original building, that's the, the part, the left, the Pizza Co. zone.
Yep.
And that's all back of house, not patron. Any questions?
Questions from the commission, Commissioner Braun?
You're talking only about the interior, right?
I'm only talking about the interior.
No, I know, and that's why I was asking, was, is that the exterior?
So, I might have missed what you said, what is the change from the owner to the interior to your table?
The, the bar grew and eliminated some space that was for patrons, the kitchen grew, also eliminating space for patrons, so the net, what's left for patrons now conforms to what you require for nine parking spaces.
And then same for the exterior, when you consider the interior and the exterior, you only need nine parking spaces.
I see, so you're talking about the outdoor.
Correct.
That is correct, that's.
Is that outdoor, just seasonal, or?
It's open-air.
Okay.
Yes. It has a roof, but it's open.
Um, I'm sorry, there's a, for the exterior, there is gonna be um a roof over the patio or the exterior?
This, well, I, I call it a porch, it's not really a patio.
Okay, fair.
Um, and that was always part of the original uh application and is uh accounted for in our per-footage calculation.
Okay, I just don't remember seeing a roof to the, what, if I'm looking at the exterior to the right.
Yeah, it, it wasn't, that was a photo uh rendering, the.
Okay, I'll look at the.
I think you'll see it in, in the elevation, the architecture.
It's noting on the plans, maybe not on the rendering. That's fine, okay, and that's where it was in the existing app, well.
Nothing, nothing regards to, yes.
Okay, thank you. Members of the commission have any questions? No, it's fine, um, any questions particular to the two witnesses, and turning up, I mean, might as well just jump in, I guess, unless you want to finish with what you have, okay?
No, we're good, I, I, we're happy to answer questions.
Um, is there any possibility of having more landscaping, or is there just no space on the, on the site, like trees or shrubs or anything?
Jim Zumo, uh, I, no, I did, I can't get any more landscaping out there, uh, with the ten-foot uh landscape requirement and pushing this, we're kind of pushed to the limit, I will say, however, um, a previous application, Sherman Street, um, we had given a little uh grass buffer to interact at the, as the uh wheel stop on the property, uh, if you recall, on one sixteen Sherman Ave, um, Sherman Street, I'm sorry, and um, that is a possibility here, I have to check the slopes to make sure that if someone is going to use that, they're not gonna bang into a, a grass slope, but there are some areas where I might be able to utilize that as the wheel stop and add maybe a two-foot strip of grass, but that would be the extent of what I can ask.
And I have another question about staffing, um, do you know what the staffing would be, and would they be, in the prior application, they were gonna, um, park off the road, is that still gonna happen, or?
Yeah, I, 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 so, so we can still um have staff park off-site, you know, those parking agreements are still in place, but we don't need to rely upon those.
Because where would they park then? They wouldn't park in the nine.
Well, it, it, it's no different from any other restaurant, you park restaurants on patron floor area, it is, it, it makes no difference whether you have one employee or four hundred employees, they park someplace, but you park based upon the patron floor area, and we're doing that.
And the, um, I'm just asking to go, figure out if I have to recuse myself, I have an office at seventy-nine South Benson, there's two doors up, so is that one of the addresses that, if that was from the last application, was one of the addresses that they were, had some kind of a side agreement for using space uh in the back, or did it wasn't?
I believe so, I believe so, but I mean, I mean, whether or not you want to recuse yourself, that's entirely your, your decision, I mean, we're certainly not asking you to do so, I mean, I, you're, I'm assuming you're a tenant and not the owner.
I'm not the owner, yeah, but that is one of the addresses that they have the arcade ring for.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Um, obviously, the owner of the, the Bob's, uh, air facility is concerned about people parking on their spot in their, in their lot. Um, can, you meet the parking requirements, I understand that completely. Um, anything that can be done to sway customers from going there in some respect, I think, would be helpful, but I don't think I, certainly can't mandate that.
Uh, my guess is that if there was, um, my clients would be happy to post a sign in, in terms of the buildings, like, please don't park at Bob's.
Yeah. Um, aside from parking, because I, like I said, I was out, what was, what was the other condition of approval that I had with setbacks?
It's, 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 what, the first condition was, uh, actually not give, not granting the waiver for the required ten-foot setback. And the other one was to come back with a parking and four plan or patron four area, like, like those were the two conditions.
Would you, if they get that, like, okay. And just for the, I mean, restaurants permitted use here?
Uh, in fact, there's like three different types of restaurants.
Yeah.
The, the, uh, places brief makes a point of a particular type, but there's three different types of restaurants, so a hundred percent, uh, a restaurant's permitted.
And I don't, I, I, we approved the commit, the last special, the special permit, right?
Yeah.
That we're here on, yeah, special permit with those conditions, so I think they would still apply, um. What, are you able, I mean, quickly, not to belabor the point, what, the issue for the appeal, what was their appeal about?
I think it was largely, well, first off, they claimed that this was a, not a takeout restaurant, but that it was one specific type of restaurant and the, um, Kathy Creedence, uh, brief, you know, very succinctly indicated that there are multiple types of restaurants that are permitted in the eating, eating zone. And then there was the issue about the ownership approval and the opportunity for, for that to be vetted by the public. I mean, I, I have a brief idea.
No, no, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just curious, um, to see if anything needed to be said in this, uh, though I guess.
Hey, I'd be happy, I'd, I'd be happy to offer my opinion on the validity of it.
No, that's okay. Uh, that, yeah. Any other members of the commission wish to be heard, or, excuse me, have questions for the applicant? Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brandon.
So, I turn you off, is it your view that the issue with the, uh, variance, uh, requiring arguably ten, uh, spaces is entirely mooted by the, the new, uh, plan that was submitted?
Sure, that was, that was the whole one.
Anything else, turning off?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, so that will end the applicant's initial presentation of this application. We will now open the hearing to public comment. I'll start with the people in the room, uh, and ask, is there anybody, any member of the public in the room here that wishes to be heard on the eight oh one Post Road application? Is there anybody signed up in chat? So, I'll turn to the public that is attending remotely. Uh, is there anybody attending remotely that wishes to be heard on this application for eight oh one Post Road? If you are calling in, please press star six, just unmute yourself and identify yourself. Is there anybody, any member of the public either in person or remote, attending remotely that wishes to be heard on this application? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion of it. Turning off, anything else to add? Okay, and thank you. So, I'll close the, uh, hearing on this application. Thank you. Moving to the next public hearing, next two items, I'll call it together. Forty Hillside Road, application of forty Hillside Road LLC to establish a neighborhood design business district on land presently zoned residence double A, and again, forty Hillside Road, the special permit application of forty Hillside Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a new veteran, veterinary hospital. Trent Fallon.
If you'd be interested in the commission, for the record, my name is John Fallon, I'm a senior, and I represent the applicant. With me along with our consultants, we're directly, Dr. Marsh, Dr. Galuso, he's in the back, I mean, two plus. With the guy who has application for applications, and there are two. There's a change of zone application where we seek to change the zone from residence double A to neighborhood design district, and there's a special permit and site plan approval application to construct a new veterinary hospital, as we discussed with you tonight. Uh, the new state-of-the-art facility, uh, for the Greenfield Animal Hospital, uh, which has provided veterinary care, vital veterinary care to the Greenfield Hill and Fairfield community for over forty years, right up the road at two twelve Hillside Road. Now, as the commission is aware, there was a prior application, uh, that was filed last year uh, with regard to this property and a similar application to relocate the animal hospital. As you'll hear more about tonight, especially from Dr. Marsh, that application, as you know, was denied by the commission based upon concerns expressed at the time of the public hearing from numerous neighbors. Uh, as a result of that, Dr. Marsh reached out directly to the neighbors and, in order to address their concerns and revise the application accordingly. That was in a wonderful and constructive, ongoing process of, over the last many months, and the result of that outreach, the discussion that ensued is the revised application that is being put in tonight. Before I get into the application, uh, in terms of details and the legal analysis that obviously is at stake, I wanna call on Dr. Marsh, who will give you a brief overview of what we, uh, need to do to preserve this very important entity in our community and what he needs to bring us to the point we're at tonight.
Thank you, John, and good evening to the esteemed members of the committee and those members of the public also joining us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight for the important work that you do for this great town. I was blessed to be born and raised here. Many of you are generally aware of the background information from our previous submission, but for those who are not, my father and longtime resident Tom Marsh started Greenfield Animal Hospital in nineteen eighty. In two thousand and fourteen, I joined the practice and it was with great pride that I worked alongside my father till he retired in January two thousand twenty. It has been my honor and privilege to carry on his legacy as the owner of the hospital in what has become a multi-generational, family-owned cornerstone small business in Greenfield Hill. I move this way. We are very proud to bear the community name and to have built an outstanding reputation for delivering quality, compassionate, comprehensive veterinary care. Over the past forty years, the hospital has grown naturally with the surrounding area, and we currently have two doctors operating with three exam rooms and a two-story building. There's two thousand and thirty-seven square feet on the main floor and a total of two thousand seven hundred and forty-five square feet. From the moment I started working with my father, the lack of adequate space and parking was glaringly obvious and something that we frequently discuss as our major concern. We have been as creative as possible in doing everything to utilize the existing space efficiently, but the hospital is woefully undersized and the parking situation is untenable. According to the preeminent resource on the subject, for a small animal general practice with no boarding, the American Animal Hospital Association Practical Guide to Veterinary Design recommends that if your practice has two doctors seeing patients and five to six exam rooms will be required, the main floor square footage will be between four thousand five hundred and seven thousand two hundred. I'm happy to expound upon the recommendations from animal hospital design literature and explain why and how the space is utilized to ensure the well-being of our staff, clients, and patients. Unfortunately, despite our best efforts, in small animal general practice where we are providing services ranging from routine wellness to urgent care to dentistry and surgery, the lack of space amounts to substandard working conditions for our medical team, stressful interactions between pets, and limited access to appointments and vital services for our clients. Veterinary medicine has changed dramatically since my father started Greenfield Animal Hospital. We are unable to modernize the practice and to meet the current standards of care set by our governing bodies, the American Animal Hospital Association and American Veterinary Medical Association. We believe the people of this community and our clients deserve better and that both access to service and quality of facility should reflect the high standards and expectations. For this reason, we began to search for a solution that would allow us to continue to serve the community that we love, and we truly explored all options, especially within the existing buil, building. But a veterinary clinic has very unique needs in terms of its layout and the main floor space. We ultimately chose to try to build a new facility on the property we are discussing today because it is the only option that satisfies those needs within Greenfield Hill. Given that the property has never been a home, already has a large parking lot located directly across from the commercial business district of Greenfield Hill and is on the same side of the street as our current practice, we hope that you will agree that this is an acceptable and beneficial use of the property and grant us permission to continue serving this community. Going through the process nearly a year ago, I learned about the many considerations involved in a decision as consequential as changing the zoning of this property. I listened respectfully to the significant and compelling reservations raised by the neighbors, the opposing community members, and the committee. This area is my home too, and I agree that it is absolutely essential that we strive to maintain, actively build upon the historic charm and character of Greenfield Hill. Over the past year, we have worked diligently to address the concerns raised and do everything in our power to make this new proposal, one that garners the broad support of the community and for which we can share community pride. I sincerely believe that this proposal does just that and will enhance the area in a way that not only bolsters its charm, but is in keeping with the neighborhood design district plan and maintains what is a vital service, a convenient and familiar location for so many of the families in Greenfield Hill and the surrounding area. I personally assumed management of the project and sat down with the neighbors throughout the process of revising the plans. I have come to know the neighbors well, have tremendous respect for them and desire to protect their interest and privacy throughout this process. I was happy to work with them in arriving at a mutually agreeable plan and ultimately in finding common ground, this revised proposal is vastly improved on all levels, and I am grateful to now have their support. I'm also grateful for the continued unanimous support of the members of the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society, an organization whose statement of purpose is to maintain the beautiful rural character of Greenfield Hill and improve and beautify the locality. By adding space in the rear of the building, we were able to nearly triple the front setback from seventeen and a half feet to now fifty feet, which will help the building blend in with the surrounding properties and enhance the curb appeal. The building size of the main floor also decreased from seven thousand to six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which is less than what is ideal for a practice of our size, but more in keeping with the nature and charm of the area. This further allowed us to reduce the size of the parking lot and to maintain more green space on the property, while at the same time significantly improving the flow of traffic and availability of parking compared to our current location. For the new proposal, we worked with Greg Cherry, our architect, and attempted to create a contemporary farmhouse aesthetic with charm that suits and harmonizes with this historic neighborhood. When you look at the rendering and elevations, you may notice that some of the architectural detail draws from the existing market across the street, which was recently renovated by a well-known local architect, and the cobblestone color was chosen because it is classic and stands the test of time. The stone water table is natural to Connecticut, and the details of the sconces and far light outside the design together while keeping the external lighting soft and unobtrusive. One of the most consequential and impactful decisions made was to employ Samantha Kepke, a landscape architect with experience in both commercial and residential design, to put together a very comprehensive design to enhance the property and to protect the neighbors. Although we found some of the existing trees will need to be removed to reinvent the screening between properties, it will be replaced by a natural deer-resistant design, including roughly fifty new trees, more than two hundred new shrubs, and several hundred new perennial plants and ground cover. Samantha was also able to work with the natural contours of the property to eliminate the need for retaining walls and reduce significant alterations in the grading of the property. From the beginning, our neighbors understood that the general animal hospital business model is not disruptive. We are a daytime practice with no overnight or emergency hours, and we are not legally able to board dogs. We are only open a half-day on Saturday and closed altogether on Sunday. Despite the challenges of operating a veterinary practice, our business is extremely resistant to economic challenges, and it is nearly unheard of for a veterinary practice to go out of business. The scale of this proposal, while in keeping with the neighborhood, allows for modest growth and the layout and design ensures that the property will serve as a veterinary clinic for my lifetime and generations to come. At the last meeting, I shared my family's deep ties to Greenfield Hill. After World War Two, my grandfather clerked at and eventually owned the Greenfield Hill Food Store. That was what attracted my mother and father to the area where I was born and raised and where they started Greenfield Animal Hospital. On multiple occasions in the eighties and nineties, they too had to seek approval from the Town Zoning and Planning Committee to first build and then expand the practice footprint. I believe history supports those decisions were in the best interest of the town, just as I believe proving the zone change now is in our collective best interest. I was blessed to meet my wife in veterinary school, who also has her doctorate in veterinary medicine and manages the practice alongside me. We started our family in this area and have been moved by all the support we have received, both personally and professionally. I associate Dr. Galuso, recently relocated to Fairfield and is as dedicated long-term as we are. We are committed to providing outstanding veterinary care in a suitable facility, and we kindly and humbly ask that you earnestly consider this proposal for us to remain in Greenfield Hill. Thank you for your time, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew. So, let me turn my attention, uh, to the zone change, uh, just to get some context to it. Obviously, the property has been previously used as a church. That's permitted under special exception in the, uh, double A zone. Uh, but it also, interestingly enough, would be a permitted use in the neighborhood design business district. So, Andrew says this is not taking a property that is being used for residential purposes and converting it to something else. The surrounding area, I think, is also important to consider when we talk about the legal standards, which I will in a few minutes, but you are all familiar with the property in the, in the neighborhood. And, and this particular property is near or adjacent to seven different properties that are currently zoned in the neighborhood design business district. Eighteen seventy-six, uh, which is the old Tesco's Market, the nineteen fifty, which is Bonda, nineteen sixty is the nineteen ninety-five, nineteen sixty Bronson and sixty-five Hillside, which are the large office buildings that now I think have had some conversion to residential use. Uh, one twenty-nine Hillside, the former real estate office, one sixty-one Hillside, former bank, one eighty-six Hillside is comprised of two separate retail buildings, uh, and so on. And as you know, and as I said, we're directly across the street from the Greenfield Shopping Center and the former Tesco's Market. So, that the proposal to relocate within this same neighborhood, again, we're already here, I think it's harmonious, uh, with regard to the, the general nature of the neighborhood. You have, again, been and replaced somewhat inundated, I believe, with letters of support, uh, which we very much appreciate. I also submitted today on behalf of John Jones, who could not be here tonight, uh, a, uh, letter of support on behalf of the, uh, Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Association. So, when you look at the zone change aspects of things, obviously, one of the things you gotta wanna look at is your plan of conservation and development. And when you look at that. And when you look at that, there are a couple of things that I think are very pertinent. At page forty-two, section number three, one, regarding the policies concerning Greenfield Hill, it stated, "The Greenfield Hill Business Center is a neighborhood design business district which promotes uses appropriate to the area and provides safeguards from over-expansion and limits business and commercial uses to those of the neighborhood scale. Only uses of this nature should be encouraged in this business center." Greenfield Veterinary Hospital, Greenfield Veterinary Hospital has, as I said repeatedly, been here in its very neighborhood for forty years. It's an integral part of the neighborhood now. What we propose with this new facility, which you can see up on the board, in an understated fashion, is to provide ourselves with a state-of-the-art facility so we can continue to provide the services that we have and the quality of those services can change. Another goal with the plan of conservation and development, section number three, ten, one talks about economic goals, and obviously, it says it's a goal to encourage the developments that provide jobs and services for our population in Greenfield Animal Hospital, obviously has and will continue to do so with your help. So the proposal that you're going to hear about tonight in the context of the special permit and the site plan approval is the following. It is a, as you can see, and it's up, I think the rendering is up now. There's a one-story, twenty-foot-high structure. It's going to comply with all the requirements of the neighborhood design business district. No variances in this law. The square footage of the building, as proposed, is six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine square feet, which is a reduction from the seven thousand square foot structure that was proposed with the applications last year. Although coverage allowed in the zone is seventy-five percent, the revised proposal seeks to establish coverage at fifteen point two percent. That, again, is less than the proposal that was before you last year, where the coverage requirement or the coverage was sixteen point nine percent. Similarly, with the F A R, the zone allowed in F A R a hundred percent. We propose F A R fourteen point four percent. That's a reduction from the earlier application of sixteen percent. Pursuant to section twelve point seven point six point four, we're complying with the residence double A setback requirements adjacent to the abutting residential zone. And as Dr. Marsh pointed out, we are providing a fifty-foot front setback, which is an increase from the seventeen point five feet setback that was proposed in the last application, and that was a good consideration of the neighbors. Our parking at twenty-six spaces is compliant with the provisions of section twenty-eight point six point six. And as you'll hear shortly, as a result of our discussion with our neighbors, improvements have been made to the design of the building, and a very comprehensive landscaping plan, as shown on the plans for stability, which we hear about in a moment, have also been agreed to. So our presentation tonight is going to involve Ms. Jimmy Zumo from Land Surveying Services, who's going to discuss with you the site plan and the site drainage. You'll note that this has been reviewed by the engineering department, Ms. Jane. She sent an email to Mr. Went, which is part of your record, on September twenty-third, and Mr. Zumo responded with an email to Mr. Went and Ms. Jane on that same date so that there have been no comments, native comments made by the engineering department, and we are in compliance with their review. Samantha Kepke will review the landscaping plan, which I've referred to a number of times. I won't steal her thunder, but I will tell you that the proposal requires the elimination of eleven trees. But in compensation of that, we are proposing the planting of forty-nine new trees on the site. So that the net increase of eighty percent. And then finally, we'll have Greg Cherry, our architect, give you an overview of our architectural design. And then with that, I'll have some other comments from a legal perspective. So.
Attorney Fallon, quickly, last time we discussed setbacks for this application, I suspect it's the same, but I'll just put it on the record. The setbacks, particularly the front and the side, the ones closest to the residence, would be the same as if this was a single-family or the current application, I think, correct?
Correct. Mr. Zumo, yeah, I'll step up as I can speak to that.
So that's great. Decent segue.
Segue is right into it. Perfect. Hello again. This is James Zumo, Land Surveying Services, twelve seventy-five Post Road, over here in Fairfield. I'll start off with answering your question. Because the proposed zone is going to be abutting directly on the sides on the rear by a double A residential zone, we have to abide by those setbacks for that zone. Because the front of the building is going to be abutting in a neighborhood design district, which is technically the center of the road, we would not have to abide by the double A zone standards for that. However, we all.
Now do.
Yeah, there are fifty feet.
So had this be a single-family residence,
This would bear to the house.
You would not be any closer than you would otherwise be?
No.
Thank you.
Yes. So that, just for that. I'm going to start from the front and move my way to the back. There's a lot of information on here. I'm not going to go crazy as death on the drainage. It has been reviewed and approved by the engineering department. I will say that it's expensive. It's catching all of the runoff from the building and all of the runoff from the parking lot, detaining it, infiltrating it, and whatever needs to be overflowed is overflowing into the town system, which is allowed in the town administration. To start, we moved the entrance on a slight angle to utilize the existing entrance. So as you drive by there, the new entrance is going to be the exact same as the existing entrance. As you move back, we have ten parking spaces going up the right-hand side of the driveway. Eight of those are going to be standard parking spaces. Two of those handicap. There will be a ramp, and there will be a small side entrance in that area so that you can access the building over there. As you go through, you're going to loop around to the back of the building, to the parking lot. The last parking lot design we had, we had completely ninety-degree parking areas. We have adjusted that to forty-five-degree parking. With forty-five-degree parking, we have to abide by eighteen-foot accessways so that cars sit back in and pull out. Sitting down with the fire department, they requested twenty feet. We provided twenty feet. So there's twenty feet of travel away between each parking space going up and through, all the way to the back. The right-hand side of the parking lot is going, of the parking area will be one-way towards the back, and then you loop around and come back down so you can come out through the front. The driveway coming in is going to be two-way. There's a small turnoff area where there's going to be a garbage enclosure that will be screened. That area will be used for deliveries and for the garbage. There's two small islands that are going to be, that will be landscaped. Ms. Kepke will go over all that stuff with what trees are going to be proposed there. One of the main things that I really want to go with, because I think in the last application that kind of lost in translation, was the coverage. You're going to look at the coverage, and you're going to see that there is a parking lot there. That parking lot is not much larger than what is existing. I don't have the exact number, but we're just about fifteen feet to the south, larger, along the entire length of that parking area. Coverage in Fairfield does not count the pavement. Coverage in Fairfield counts the footprint of the building and anything one foot or greater, including the adjacent grade. So the coverage, when you look at this, is only going to count the building, the canopy that is over the existing entrance in the front and the side entrance on the left-hand side of the building. I think last time there was some comment that said, you know, oh, how is this going to be counted as coverage when the entire thing is now going to be parking? But just so that everybody's aware that that's how the coverage is calculated here.
And south is to the back of the property?
South is to the right-hand side of the property.
I'm looking at that now. It's to the right of the property.
Yes, yes, correct. We eliminated all retaining walls. There was a retaining wall on the left-hand side of the property. We eliminated that. We're just going to be doing grading out here. Anything that is removed from the, anything that we can use on-site will be used on-site. The grading is following the existing contours of the property. The existing property slopes from north to south. That is how it's going to be sloping now. With the enhancements in the landscaping, all of that runoff will be mitigated. Again, engineering has seen the plan and has approved essentially the plan. Other than that, all departments will be tackled, W P C A, engineering zoning. Conservation doesn't have jurisdiction over the property, but other than that, all departments will be reviewed and any comments that we receive now or in the future will be addressed.
We did have co-review.
Yes.
And that, those comments, any comments that were addressed to co-review, that affected the plans.
One big thing that got removed, the P and Q gravel. That has been removed completely. That is no longer on the plan, and that will not be seen on-site. There you go. Thank you, Samantha.
Do we have sewer, sewer permit has been obtained or will be obtained?
It will be obtained. Yes, it will be obtained. It's, it will be obtained.
Needed, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it's needed. It's currently disconnected. I'd be terrified that there's no longer insurance there. I have a proposed plan on here. Any comments I get from the sewer department will be addressed, but I don't see that being an issue.
Sewer capacity will be sufficient for this project?
I believe so, yeah. They, we're not increasing like a unit count, so if the sewer department wants to see something in terms of a flow meter, a flow, we'll address that. But again, this has gone through co-compliance, and they haven't asked for that yet.
Yeah, we, we reviewed the plans with them as part of the co-review process. Safety status, I guess, so we don't expect problems.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Samantha?
I'm co-compliant. I think I've been looking at the one from last time. This is from June of twenty twenty-one. Is there another one that came out after that?
No, that was the one, that was the only one we did.
For last one? That was a bigger footprint, so.
It was. Much worse.
Also, one other thing, it's hard to sort of envision the changes, and I can't even, I can't even pull up the old one. I didn't download it. So is it possible to send it by email what the old building looked like versus what this building looked like?
I can definitely provide a plan that shows that. I mean, the site plan or the elevation.
Or like what the building looked like and maybe.
Well, I'm sure staff can. I don't need to throw work on staff, but those plans are part of us, I guess.
It'll stay on the watch.
Yeah, staff can ensure timeline gets you the original site plan and the original elevation. So when you're deliberating or thinking, you'll have a chance to compare. Thank you. Thank you, Samantha. Any other questions before I just shut up? He's not going for it.
No, I figured.
Do you have a question?
I have a certification. I'll get to it online. Has this been approved by the W P C A or has not?
The W P C A permit has not been issued yet, but we have had conversations, and we don't anticipate that that will be issued.
Okay, thank you. What was that hearing?
Your hearing, the previous hearing?
The code.
No, I read the one with.
Two thousand twenty-one.
No, one of the W P C A hearings took place.
There hasn't been, no, not W Sewer Department. I'm sorry, I meant Sewer Department, not W P C A.
Go to it.
Samantha, to review with you the list of, I think we have it now.
Yeah.
And we have colored versions of it.
Okay. Thank you, John, for the introduction and great evening to members of the committee. I'm Samantha Kepke, a landscape architect on this project. And I've been working closely with Dr. Marsh and the neighbors to develop a comprehensive landscape plan that accomplishes three main objectives. The first objective is staying true to the landscape design and true charm of Greenfield Hill. It's important that although this is a commercial use, the site has a residential feel. We want passersby to think this is just another beautiful home on hillside grove. We have accomplished this in a few ways. And we're funded by creating an expansive front lawn, which blends with the residential properties on either side. The driveway is lined with dogwood trees, which is the toxic tree of the neighborhood, and the parking aisles are filled with shade trees and ground cover to break up the paving. I'm introducing over three hundred evergreen and deciduous shrubs and hundreds of flowering perennials around the foundation of the building as well as the perimeter of the site. This is a typical treatment of a high-end residential site. And I have the others. The second objective is to ensure we're adding more trees to the site. As John mentioned, we have eleven required modules for this project, but we're adding forty-nine new trees. This is more than triple the amount of removing, and new trees will be mixed with evergreen and deciduous trees, including shade trees, ornamental trees, and flowering trees. The third and final objective is screening for the neighbors. I've worked closely with all the abutting neighbors to ensure they're comfortable with the screening. We've decided on a natural buffer approach for the mix of evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs mimicking a natural woodland border. Overall, I'm confident this design complements the aesthetic of Greenfield Hill and will provide a beautiful space for Greenfield Animal Hospital to continue to serve its community as it has for decades. As a resident of Greenfield Hill myself, I would be thrilled to see Dr. Marsh and his team in the new location.
Thank you, Samantha. It kind of self-evident that Samantha was an extremely important addition to our team in the last application. I think her work has been incredible in terms of the long-term endurance that Dr. Marsh or outreach there, outreach to the neighborhood, and it's really, it's been great given the soil and the.
Any questions from the commission?
Can we get a copy of that email? I don't think that was in the package, the landscaping plan. Or it was, I don't see it.
What's that, the landscape plan?
I don't see it.
I think it's. Black and white.
Oh, it says black and white?
The one that comes straight out.
The one before.
I thought that was in green.
There's a colored one too. That we submitted.
Oh, so we've seen it as black and white then?
Sure.
Okay. I didn't think we saw it, which is just.
Wait, I'm going to scroll up to the past.
No, that's something that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the answer, Commissioner, is yes, we can, I'm sure, again, keep asking staff at that. We did submit that as part of the exhibit material. So the colored one is now part of your record.
Okay.
The black and white one was submitted with the original.
Okay, we'll get that.
Thank you, Samantha.
Hold on, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Quick question. So perennial plantings, are there going to be native plants?
Some of them are native. They're all deer-resistant.
Any other questions for Samantha?
Thank you.
So I'm not going to be redundant to Dr. Marsh's statement, but I think the factual considerations here are important as we lead in stating a look at the standards of approval that you want to apply here. But obviously, the motivation for this proposal is due to the fact that the current facility just isn't adequate at this time to meet the present day standards for veterinary practice. The site is cramped and inefficient and lacks what is needed for the treatment areas to meet those current standards. As he testified to, the standards have changed dramatically over the last forty years and this new facility will allow us to have the facilities that will keep and maintain the standards that we want to adhere to at the practice. The onsite parking at the current location, if you've been there, is awkward at best, and the location at the corner does provide traffic challenges. So we're enhancing safety here, I think, with a much more favorable site plan from a traffic perspective. And the modified size of the facility arising from the constructive conversations that we've had with our neighbors, I think now makes it clear that we are proposing something that is quite comparable and harmonious to the other buildings, the business buildings immediately adjacent to us that I've detailed before, but also compatible with the residential uses that comprise our other segment of our neighbors. And again, I think it's important to note, both in terms of the zone change and the special permit, that this will not result in a new business and being established at a previously residentially zoned location, but rather simply allow us to move down the street to this new facility to relocate to the same neighborhood that we've been serving for five years. So what does all that mean with regard to the standards of approval? I'm not going to read it to you because I know you know it, but I did submit to Mr. Went today a brief memo that talks about what the legal standards are with regard to map amendments in the state of Connecticut. You're well familiar with the standards. You want to take a look at whether or not what is being proposed is in accordance with the comprehensive. with the comprehensive plan and whether it reasonably relates to a normal police power as set forth in section eight dash two. There are citations for all of these. The zoning commission passing on a zone change. I'm jumping into the legal and I doubt the man who did the work to create this plan, so I apologize for that. So excited to share my legal. You're all probably more excited than I am, so, great.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Greg Cherry, and we're a start effect in, in your office located in Watertown. Um, so I've got a bit of a dry chat, so I'm sorry. Uh, I'll make this quick because there's so many other people talking about everything that's part of what I've had to deal with. Um, the architecture overall, from the idea of the type of roof, the, the gables that we have, hasn't really changed a lot since a year ago, but the building is smaller, it is far less deep than it used to be, same width overall. We did move it a tiny bit to the north, getting it away from the setback line by a couple of feet. And we ended, we integrated the exterior finishes of the structure similar to that of what we have across the street. Um, the, with the letter cable and the stone that we're placing versus, again, the building across the street, um, the shed dormer we have now on, on our roof here, um, very similar to shed dormers on the building across the street. The, the gable end overhangs, the rake end, the rake overhangs, again, like it was, like it is across the street. Um, and, uh, coupla et cetera. Everything is a lot the same, but we melded it more to what we have across the street. Um, the finishes, the rendering, if you don't mind, what the rendering back, please. The access in and out of the building from the previous design, pretty much the same from the back corner where, of course, all the parking is. Um, and, uh, that, that really didn't change. Um, the, what we do have on the exterior that you haven't seen before is the board and batten that we have on the gable there. And what was discussed about the lighting, there's fairly relatively little lighting on the exterior of this structure. Um, and all of it shielded, most of it is in the softens with downlights that will wash the building, but not the, not the area, not past our property lines for sure. Um, and I think that's about it.
Hold on one second, any? Commissioner Brock.
How many parking spaces are on the new one? The old one had twenty-eight.
Twenty-six.
Okay.
This one has twenty.
Hold on.
One handicap.
Before you go, in case there are any questions. Any other question, questions for the commission? Commissioner Francis.
Is that a single roof?
Yes, what is our single roof? Uh, there are, there is some standing seam room, uh, on the porch area in that left-hand corner where the overhang is for both the side entrance, which is near the handicap spaces, and the rear entrance, which is towards the rest of the parking. So, uh, and that, that is some standing seam room there.
What does that mean, standing seam?
Standing seam. Um, metal roof, if you know metal roofs, the standing seams and type of roof and what you just did there, that's the standing seam. All right? Um, yeah, similar to other pre-engineered products, but this is not pre-engineered product, that's for sure. Um, plus it would probably be a type of colored roof as opposed to just a simple yellow and grayish color that we're mentioning.
Were you involved with the last application? I just don't remember.
Yes.
Okay. So you've been involved with the last application last year and this current one, I assume you've had a chance to look, to look at the neighborhood, the, to view what the, the architecture is like there, how they, you, how do you feel that this building har, do you feel, yeah, do you feel that this building harmonizes with the neighborhood as far as the residential aspect, the residential area?
This is a, this is a commercial structure, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
But scale has cut down considerably. It was last time and it's cut down even more now.
I understand it's commercial versus residential, I'm not too concerned about that. As far as aesthetics though, you feel it harmonizes with the neighborhood?
Well, absolutely.
Yeah. And even not just the residence, but the commercial aspect, the commercial area across the street, there's no, this doesn't stand out like a sore thumb that harmonizes with the area.
As I mentioned earlier, I was referring back to these, one or two units that are across the street that have all the same items right here.
Yeah, and I remember that. So there's no concern about?
If I can add.
Uh, why don't you come up if you're going to add, but let me ask the question first, like, um, you know, I'm sure you're not, you don't do, I'm not sure if you do appraisal or not, but you don't feel this is going to, uh, impact or negatively impair somebody's, uh, property values?
No.
It harmonizes with the area, harmonizes with the neighborhood? Okay. And it was formerly a church, so not really a residence in its own right.
Want to add something?
Doctor.
Uh, I just, in terms of, um, kind of providing Craig as well with this division board that we were having to try to improve the aesthetic, um, so it was, it was in looking at a lot of the different homes that are being built, but trying to get away from that stark contrast you see in a lot of them and go with something for subtle and doesn't take out the thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other questions, Commissioner Harrison?
This is for Dr. Marsh. Um, thank you very much for your.
Let me just say, is that, because I'm not sure if he wants to.
Oh, yes.
No, that's fine. If there were ever a Commissioner Harrison, any question?
Okay, Commissioner Harrison, go right ahead.
Do you plan to expand your staff? Have there been?
I think our president, uh, plan, probably at least for the last five years, would dictate me having a third vet come on. Um, I'm fortunate to, to be like pretty active in the community and the veterinary world, so I have a really wonderful vet that wants to join the practice that lives locally. Um, and so we would expand just so much to kind of bring that third vet on, but it doesn't really represent an exchange from where we are now, really, uh, Dr. Gluso and I are making the work of three vets right now. We could really use this and of having that person here, so that would agree, I think.
Thank you, Dave. So before I had my brain freeze, uh, I was starting to summarize the thank you, I was starting to talk about the standards for, uh, legal standards for consideration of map amendments, uh, talking about Segway, but the chair really stole my thunder by asking the questions that he just asked, it's like, did I give him a copy of the script? So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything more about that, except insofar as those are the factors to look at and that when you act on a zone change, when you look at this material that's submitted from Mr. Went today, he, a zoning commission has very broad discretion when it acts within its prescribed legislative powers, and one of those legislative powers, the ultimate legislative power, is a determination with regards to your zone map. So I think there is substantial evidence here in terms of the zone change, the comprehensive zone, uh, the comprehensive plan, which I referred to earlier, and the factual, um, considerations that I think myself and the chairman have talked about to support the zone change. What about the, uh, special permit? All right, so you have to look at section twenty-five point seven point seven. First is the accessory characters to harmonize with the neighborhood. Again, we've been forty years in this neighborhood, uh, that we have tremendous support here. You've received many, many letters in support of our proposal this before you tonight, including that from the Greensville Villas Improvement Association. We've had a very constructive and ongoing dialogue with our neighbors after the denial that has led to this revised application this before you tonight. You'll have the architectural design that Greg has just talked about and which he implemented. You have the landscaping plan that Ms. Kepke reviewed. So I think all of those go to the first part of, uh, the, the stat, the statute or the regulations, the accessory characters to harmonize with the neighborhood. It then goes on to say, to accomplish and transition in character between areas of unlike character. This is a classic case of that. First of all, this was never a residence, it was a church, but we have some beautiful residence with homes that comprise some of our neighbors and we have the, uh, commercial activity, which I testified to, which you know very well. So I think this, and this design does in fact do that, it does accomplish a transition in character. Preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community and protect property values. Uh, all of those things I think are accomplished here, uh, and indeed, sometimes going through this process is not easy, but as, uh, Dr. Marsh indicated in his comments, sometimes the process yields an even better application, and I hope you'll agree that we've come to that point tonight. Uh, there's no detriments when in fact here, uh, we've got a sensitive architectural design, the landscaping plan is robust. The other consideration under section twenty-five is avoid undue traffic congestion. We've obviously got an enhanced onsite layout here, uh, that's going to be a great improvement over the current facility. As Jimmy Zumo testified to, we've got proper aisleways spacing to allow for proper two-way traffic. We've got allowance for turnaround for larger vehicles, uh, and a, an appropriate pickup and drop-off area. So I, I think that if you look at the standards of section twenty-five and the standards that are applicable with regard to a, a zone change application, I hope you'll agree we've met those standards. He did receive a couple of letters, I don't want to dwell on them, two that I'm aware of, only two of all that I'm aware of with, from, from a few neighbors, I just want to briefly comment on that. Um, one of the letters indicate that, uh, Forty Hillside Road is surrounded by residential homes, which we're very sensitive to and have worked, Dr. Marsh's work tirelessly over the last year, uh, to accommodate and reach a consensus with our residential neighbors. But net, we are directly across the street from the neighborhood design district, uh, and we do have our residential neighbor support with regard to this application. There's also a reference in that letter about use of the other buildings, while as we testified to at the last hearing, we looked at all of the other buildings in the community and either because of their size or layout or whatever, they were just not compatible with the ability to create the kind of facility we need to do that, not feasible. Um, then there was a, a comment in that letter about fitting into the culture of our village. Well, we have been part of the culture of this village for the last forty years and have a great deal of our neighbor support, overwhelming neighbor support. We also received a, a letter, uh, made from the other property across the street. It's interesting, that's a non-performing use, yeah, it's garage, uh, I mean, it's quite active garage. Uh, this revised application is a different application than the one that was before you, last November. It's smaller, has much more robust landscape, and it has the neighbors support. So I just wanted to briefly touch on those. But in, in summary, and I thank you for your patience with us, in the final analysis, this proposal is designed to address the current and ongoing existing needs of the clients, uh, of this veterinary hospital, uh, and to provide a modern facility we can all be proud of in the community as a result of the very constructive and positive discussions, which are really unparalleled. I mean, I've been doing this for a long time, and Dr. Marsh really took to heart what he heard the last hearing. He's worked with his neighbors with regard to this application, and he's revised this application in such a way that he's addressed the overwhelming number of concerns that some of the neighbors have. This practice has been an integral part of the Greensville Villas Bearcove for forty years. We want to keep them in this neighborhood, we want to make sure we do that in a facility that is adequate and proper by the standards of veterinary practice today. So at the end of the day, what this application does for us is it allows Dr. Marsh to continue the heritage that was started by his father, Tom, and, uh, provide a facility here that's attractive aesthetically, architecturally, harmonizes with the character of neighborhoods, and will allow for generations to come, uh, a wonderful facility for this practice to continue in Greensville Hill. And that's really it. We hope you'll reconsider the application. End.
Commissioner Brock, Freeman.
Um, thank you, Attorney Fallon, and, uh, you know, I appreciate the collaboration with the neighbors and the redesign and the screening. Um, could you or any member of the team with Dr. Marsh talk, um, about the issues of, of, you know, protecting neighbors from, say, pet noise, uh, pet waves, or, uh, garbage collection?
Yes, um, pet noise, pet waste, and garbage collection. Favorite topic. You get all the stuff.
Um, yeah, so I guess touching on the last one first, um, the neighbors all use the same garbage company that we currently use, um, and so we redesigned the way that that would look. They're, it's not a dumpster situation, they're individual garbage cans that this gentleman comes, in this case, will be twice a week, and he doesn't start until after, you know, appropriate hours, and so the neighbors, we've talked about that and they kind of were, were okay with the way this planned.
You can say, well, you know, say, the garbage company is the nearest.
That's right. So they know the, the gentleman, the company.
Are there any precautions that need to be taken operationally with the medical waste?
Um, no, not in terms of your regular garbage, there is biohazard, medical waste that's treated differently, that's picked up separately. Um, as far as noise, you know, we talked about the fact that unit counts equally poor dogs, we don't overnight anything, if we have something that is unwell and needs veterinary care overnight, we send them to one of the local emergency clinics for that. Um, we do keep some cats overnight. Um, we had both of our existing neighbors, you know, testify last time, and I know one of them at least sent a letter again this time just stating that it's not been an issue. I may remember my dad telling me about the process of him getting initial approval and some of the things that the neighbors at the time were bringing up and, um, you know, just, it's a, it's a small community vet practice, it, it really doesn't generate, uh, a lot and it's only open during the day. Uh, so it hasn't been an issue at our current practice, which our neighbors testified to, and, uh, it wouldn't be an issue at this practice.
So you're moving just down the street, um, I, I don't think I saw a traffic study report in there, but I don't, the congestion of, I don't think congestion will be a problem around the same street that you have then?
Yeah, I think the, if you, if you visit our area, you would, I guess, understand that the current practice is the problem right now, um, the way our, we're set up on the corner of Hillside and Hope and Hope Farm Road, um, we have, you know, there's not a lot of traffic at any one time, but there's people coming in and pulling out and we have six parking spots right now, uh, for, for clients. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a very hard area for people to walk and to do things. I think this basically brings that all off of the corner.
The side street that doesn't have much traffic, so there's really, coming in and out is not going to be a problem.
Yeah, and we were able to, uh, make sure, even though we modified that back area where the, the people would drop off food and things like that, we were able to make sure there's a, a place for trucks to be able to come outside of the road and all that.
One thing I should mention, because we told the neighbors before, is in our dialogue with neighbors, there was a request that we request the labor of sidewalks, um, on the.
Service.
We did submit that, uh, request as part of this record, so I just want to mention that to you, that we certainly will consider. The, the background of that though is that in the course of these discussions with neighbors, uh, there was a feeling, which we can cover, that based upon the character of the neighborhood, the lack of sidewalks generally in the neighborhood, that there was a feeling that the sidewalks would look out of place and would not enhance the aesthetics that the neighbors wanted to create and that we worked with the neighbors to create. So I just want to make sure you remember that.
Well, the idea behind it is you re, you, uh, what's the word, uh, refurbish your lot, have a sidewalk, somebody else refurbish their lot, get a sidewalk, somehow they connect at some point.
Right.
That, that doesn't seem to be, that's not going to probably happen in this area.
It does not appear to.
Yeah, so you're just going to have.
And then I understand it's at your discretion, we just committed to the neighbors, we're happy to do so, that we would think of replacing, I have this thought.
And I don't, is there a sightline, is there a need for a sightline and analysis?
It's, it's, it's straight.
Yeah, that's what I.
Previously, it was a church which had regular services there for some time. Previously, it was a church which had regular services there for some time, and we did have that code review back in last year, and the engineering department had presented...
Which was the under their purview.
Yeah, but it's a very strong...
No, it is. I know it is, just for the record. I have just a few more questions. I'm sorry. I see the time, we're coming up to 10 o'clock. Any other members of the public commission have questions? I mean, just finally, at least for me, one of the things I discussed last time was, why not look to the commercial area that already exists? It's still not fully occupied. Why not look to the rest of Fairfield? I understand and appreciate that you've been in Greenfield Hill and the desire to stay there, but can you talk about if there's been any investigation into the current commercial areas in Greenfield and the buildings that are not, and I don't know, I'm not going to tell you, I know all what they're vacant, could they be converted? Could they not be converted? And then secondly, why not the rest of Fairfield? Or if that was a declaration?
Yeah. The only site that, you know, I think would kind of come up is the old Chase Bank site, 161 Hillside Road. And that building has 5,000 square feet, and I think 21 parking slots. But there's a number of issues. For one, it's a multi-story building, and so when we talk about practice design, you're talking about the main floor square footage, that's where your treatment area, your surgical room, your dental, your exam rooms, or, you know, wards for patients and things like that are, for obvious reasons, there's very limited use of another space in a veterinary facility, whether that's a second floor or a basement, you know, storage, maybe some manager's office, maybe a conference or something like that, but not usable space. So in that Chase building, that 5,000 square feet is two stories. The parking is awkward as well as it is, and then financially, it's a typical stretch. It's not, you know, operating on a veterinary budget, not the human hospital budget. And as far as moving outside of Greenfield Hill, it's not something I'd like to consider. I feel, I mean, I literally grew up the road from this practice, in fact, was born, and spent the first several months of my life in a cottage on the same property as this vet clinic. So the space that we're in is important, and then between the letters you guys will have received, and I know a number of people hoping to speak, they'll speak to the importance of having this kind of a service close by and where they're familiar and where it's convenient to them. So it would essentially change and not be the same hospital if we were to do it easily.
As far as the great, you've undertaken investigation, the commercial area in Greenfield Hill, and it's not suitable.
We looked at every option before and then after this last one.
You just got the abiding neighbors are on board?
To the best of our knowledge, I don't want to speak for anyone, but our understanding is that they are. Dr. Marsh's work...
Did you see the two oppositions that came in? Do you know who they, Margot, Margots or Margot Turk?
I don't. I don't. And the other letter was from the owner of the gas station.
Is it David?
Repair facility.
DeSilio?
DeSilio. That's the capacity not to form these requests.
Okay. He owns, say that one more time.
He owns the property, I believe, and I assume went into a tenant who runs automobile repair facility there, which is a non-conforming use. Don't hold it label, but not quite active, I wouldn't say if we're talking.
That's fine. I just want to know...
It's necessarily...
I just want to get a sense of, as you said, overwhelming support.
My two letters I know about are ones from the town across the street, and I guess it's Ms. Turk.
You don't know where she lives?
Flowerhouse.
Excuse me?
She lives at Flowerhouse.
Flowerhouse? Where's that?
Off Mill Plain.
Mill Plain. Thank you. Any other members in the commission have questions? Commissioner Harrison?
Relevant, but just out of curiosity, what do you do with your building that you're currently occupied?
Yeah, I have a close relationship with the neighbors that I have now, and I have talked to them about this. Fortunately, because we have that little cottage on the property, and my father has the note on my mortgage to that property, I'm not going to be in any kind of rush to find something to go there, and it's a, it is not a good property for any kind of bustling business. It has to be something quiet and plain, and, you know, I would do my best to make sure that whatever we ultimately find for that, long-term, at least that's suitable for the area.
I'll have to come back to you in the final analysis. It will have to come back to you for a special permission.
Any other members in the commission have questions? I see that, anything from you, attorney Fallon, for initial presentation?
No, the only thing, I do know there are a few people, I don't think it's a lot, there are a few people have been waiting patiently. I don't focus on the chair of the commission, but you might want to, I don't know how many people there are waiting to speak.
How many, I assume, the rest of the people here? And just out of curiosity, we have a curfew at 10 o'clock, and I know we bumped up against it, we've had a busy evening. Who would want to speak? Why don't we do what we can to get, because they waited patiently? So at least for the people in the room. So let's open up the public comments. Come on up. If you can, just state your name, your address. Feel free to say what you wish. Keep it your main, please, to the application. And again, you can say as much as you like, if we can keep it as close to our curfew.
Sure, yes. My name is Megan Teed. I live at 26 Mill River Road, right in Greenfield Hill. I'm a client of the animal hospital, and I just wanted to come here and support of the new location. I have a dog, and I've been firsthand experience, experiencing limitations with the current property. I love Dr. Marsh and his partner, but, you know, it is, in a new sense, it's very tight. Literally, it's right down the street, and there's commercial properties in that vicinity, so I'm not understanding what the major pushback is. It seems to fit very well in years too. Maybe an apartment building that would go up or something, you know, good to get through, but I just wanted to say, you know, it's both supportive and not one. That's what I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Jody Owen, 317 Vernon Hill Road. For the record, I'm also vice chair of the Conservation Commission here at Jerkville. I live 562 yards from Greenfield Animal Hospital and have been a client of theirs for 20 years, and I'm here to voice my support of this application. Pretty much everything I've wanted to say has already been said, but I will just reiterate that the parking lot at the current location is not only inconvenient, it is just downright dangerous. You have people and their animals walking in and out of the building while other people in their cars are trying to drop the in and out spaces. You've got drivers making deliveries all right on a relatively busy intersection for a qualified neighborhood. I also want to point out that the village has really suffered with COVID. We have three commercial vacancies right now, so I think that if there is an opportunity to have a longstanding locally owned small business stay in the village by moving so that they can expand and continue their business to serve our community, that that should definitely be championed, opposed to having Dr. Marsh go elsewhere in Jerkville than having a four vacancy. And to just expand a little bit on Chairman's comments about property values, what I am concerned about in terms of my property values is a vacant lot, vacant commercial space. It's a village that has vacancies and does not look active and thriving when people drive by. So again, if we are able to enhance our village by creating a new vibrant business or an existing vibrant business in a new location on a vacant lot, then I don't see any reason why we sign this. I wish I would be able to that.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name's William Pitcher. I'm at 801 Mill Plain Road. I will try to keep this succinct in the name of keeping everyone here well past the hours that we're supposed to be. First of all, thank you all. I'm sure this is a volunteer position, and you're either experiencing the higher people who are enormously displeased, or the joyfulness of people that get approval. So it can't be an easy job to do, and I'm sure it weighs on you heavily. I will say full candor that Andrew is a very dear friend of mine. I've known him for 20-plus years. His family practice has been open for longer than I've been alive, and I'm a county, born and bred. I've lived in Fairfield all my life, and the things that I'd like to touch on are the intangibles that Andrew brings to the table. I'm not able to speak fraud legally, per attorney Fallon. I'm not able to speak in terms of data for the survey sites and all that great information that was shared earlier, but I can tell you that Andrew's entire livelihood and his business and his family's livelihood hinges on compassion and empathy and helping people. This is a man who quite literally earns his paycheck by, one, keeping people's family members alive, and also the terrible time when it's time for them to cross over. He meets with the owners and listens to them and makes them understand that what they're doing is the right choice for their animals and their family members. It's not easy. It weighs heavily on him. It weighs heavily on his life, takes a huge, huge emotional toll. But more speaking to that, I think it's very important to consider what that means to him as a tenant in that particular space in Greenfield Hill. I understand, as you probably do, when I look at the apartment building that's on the train tracks off of Onkla, $8,500 for a three-bedroom, two-bathroom is outrageous. I don't know how you feel about it. I've been here all my life. I certainly can't afford that. There's not a whole heck of a lot anybody can do about it, because of course, state precedent overrides town precedent. Here we have a known individual who's been in town all his life. His family's been here 40-plus years, going back, as Andrew detailed. This is somebody who is absolutely committed to the well-being of the neighborhood. He's not going to do any kind of sleight of hand and an about face. You could go to anybody that knows him well, or is who a client or a patient, and they will explain to you just how much they trust him and what he's done and what he means to their families. So that's really all I have to say, just knowing Andrew personally. I wanted to vouch for his character and his integrity. He's about as sincere an individual as I know, and I can't see any reason why I wouldn't be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking very quickly, I'm going to address a couple, too. Heather Jerk and I live at 900 Road, right off of Mill Plain. I've also been a client of Andrew's for over 20 years. I also follow his partner. I agree with all of the statements made by the family here. The parking, the traffic situation at the current location is dangerous. I've almost been hit multiple times. You also can't walk through dog anywhere. I feel like this new location would give, would change all of those. Also, just want to also add a note about the dogs or, you know, animals, the noise. There's also a, what are they called, a cleaning service across the street, not cleaning, but a long way, grooming service across the street. I've been there for a very long time. I also go there. There's a lot of dogs going in and out of there, and I don't think that's ever been a problem. I've never noticed any issues with noise ordinances or anything of that sort. Just wanted to add that note, and I obviously fully support the move. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public in the room which should be heard?
Just for someone...
Is the commission okay? Okay.
First, we have Gary and Jody Peterson.
Okay. and Mrs. Peterson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Gary, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's your turn for public comment, so if you can just give us your address quickly and feel free to...
This is Gary Peterson. We live next door on the south side, 14 Hillside Road, directly next to the vet, or proposed vet. We are the most impacted by this. And before I give some comments on support, I do have a few questions that were not addressed, and one is the signage. Another is, what will the lighting be on our side of the house? And can you confirm the setback amount from our side of the house? Can those questions be answered?
I expect attorney Fallon has heard you, and I suspect he will answer those questions on his rebuttal.
Okay, and then, assuming he will, my wife and I originally opposed the initial plan that was submitted over a year ago for four main reasons. The size of the footprint, the institutional design, the short 17-foot setback, and the lack of appropriate screening. We have always maintained that we prefer a single-family residence on the property due to concerns about the permanent designation of this property as a commercial entity, but now we understand that this proposal may be the best alternative. So since that original proposal, we have worked with Andrew to address the concerns. He's done his best to accommodate our input, so we're now not opposed to the plan and expect to work with Andrew and his landscaper designer to make sure that the screening is to our liking. So far, it has been. I will have to assume that the town engineering department has done their job to ensure that we will not get extra drainage onto our property, which we have had in the past before the Jehovah's Witness Church made some adaptations, and also including the amount of water that can rush down Hillside Road in a storm and spill gravel, et cetera, into our driveway. So assuming those can be taken care of, I encourage the commission also to grant the variance to not require a sidewalk, which would be an unnecessary eyesore, inconsistent with the rural character of the neighborhood on a street that has no other sidewalks in the area. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Peterson.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is Jody. I'm just going to follow up quickly. My name's Jody Peterson. I've lived with my husband Gary at 14 Hillside Road for 38 years. Our property line is shared with the lot owned by Dr. Marsh. As mentioned by my husband, we did oppose the prior application, but now support this new one. I would like quickly to speak on a more personal note about the history we've had with Andrew. Actually, from the very start last March, we were in support of Andrew moving next door, even though we didn't like the idea of the zoning changing to commercial. We preferred a single-family home to be built between the three surrounding residences, but that did not seem to be in the cards after the church was on market for such a long time. We felt that Andrew's office hours, which are especially limited on the weekends, and the fact that he cannot ward animals, would not cause enough of a disturbance to fight his application, given the large range of other possibilities. We were accustomed to the quiet come and goings of the Jehovah's Witnesses and didn't feel that it would be that much different, although the size of the church was considerably smaller. That aside, we told Andrew last March that we were concerned about the effectiveness of the screening, but would work with him and not oppose the plan. So it was, however, as the plans were being developed, we heard very little after that. So it was necessary for Gary and me to go to Town Hall right before the last TPZ meeting for this application to see the plans. After careful review, we and the immediate neighbors felt that the design of the building, the set, the small setback in the landscaping did not conform with or enhance the rural feeling of Greenfield Hill. After the TPZ denied the application, Andrew contacted us the next morning to tell us that he truly wanted to make this work. He was apologetic that he had dropped contact concerning the proposed building and plans. He clearly felt badly about how it had all been handled and has been an ardent communicator since. Andrew has sent emails, met with us on numerous occasions at every turn. He's been open to suggestions and has tried to accommodate what is important to the other two neighbors as well. In the revised plans, the building itself is much more attractive with a larger setback from Hillside Road. He's working with a different landscape architect who is creating a more natural and pleasing design. Andrew has addressed many other issues, including... Andrew has addressed many other issues, including, as before mentioned, the pee area for the dogs, um, which was within just a few feet from our house, keeping the 70 year old use that separate our backyard from his property, reducing the size of the proposed parking lot as much as possible and adding wooden fencing with planting to disguise the dumpster. The south elevation which faces our house has basically not changed very much, remaining very close to our home and highly visible. We do worry that our property is the most affected and it might devalue our home. However, given Andrew's willingness to work with us and providing the best screening possible, we trust his sincerity to do so. We also trust that he will be a good neighbor for many years to come, therefore we support this application, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berkowitz?
Hi folks, I'll keep this relatively brief, 58 North Cedar Road. Um, I echo the comments of Gary and Jody Peterson, um, it's been great working with Andrew over the past several months and, uh, fully in support of the plan, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz.
And then, uh, lastly, we have Tommy, uh, Leonelli, I think we lost one of the others.
Mr. Leonelli?
How you doing? Yeah, my name is Tommy Leonelli, I live at 2 Hickory Lane in Fairfield. Uh, first of all, I'd thank, like to thank all the representatives and, and board members and everyone involved for your time supporting not only, uh, the needs of our town, but, but, uh, Andrew Marsh and the animal hospital's request. Um, I'm here to support, uh, the, the changing of the zone to allow the animal hospital to build the newer larger facility on 40 Hillside, um, I'm a resident of Fairfield, I was born in Fairfield and I actually lived two doors down from the animal hospital at 648 Hope Farm Road, um, for two years. In fact, I, I just moved out about a week ago, um, but as a neighbor, um, walking my dog every day and as a, a client, I was able to see, you know, the congestion of the parking situation daily. Um, and it was pretty insane if you had to see how the employees had to play Tetris to get their cars in and out. Uh, I think there was, you know, six or seven cars in a, a two lane spot behind the house, um, anyway. Um, I've recommended, uh, new neighbors to, uh, or neighbors with new pets to the animal hospital only for them to be turned away as, you know, they're limited, um, the amount of customers they can have by their space. So approving the zoning change would enable more pet owners to get that, um, really, really special service that, uh, PJ Pitcher had mentioned, um, and, you know, help grow a local family business, so, uh, I'm eager for the update. Um, the old church, uh, I think could use, uh, uh, an update and I'm impressed with the designs. Um, and again, as a, a client and a resident of Greenfield Hill, I'd, I'd really, um, like them to stay in the area. It's a, a, a point of convenience and even pride, um, so yeah, in closing, I want, uh, I, I wanna share again, I think that Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital is the type of business that makes Fairfield Fairfield and, uh, I'd, I'd love more businesses around, uh, for a long time like them, so thank you all.
Lastly?
Lastly, we have Deborah Coleman.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Coleman? Ms. Coleman, are you there, is she off mute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear? Can you hear us? Um, is she a call in?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Can you hear me, can you hear?
Hear you. I'm sorry, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I could not hear you answering me, I apologize. Uh, my name is Deborah Coleman, I live at 26 Cranston Street. I have been a client of Greenfield Animal Hospital for 20 years, um, and I am a former architect who, uh, worked at Yale and I couldn't, have not been able to help as a, as a client. Um, who visited the great, the current site many times as Dr. Marsh helped ease the final years of my service dog's life. Um, I could not help but, uh, notice all of the deficiencies through no fault of his, um, in the current facility. Uh, starting with, as everyone has mentioned, the part, the, I, I wouldn't even say the parking is the worst, it's the getting out of the parking lot that is, um, so dangerous when you have to swing into the oncoming traffic's lane, uh, to make the turn out of the parking lot. Uh, once inside the building, it's very cramped, um, it's very hard to imagine it being altogether safe for humans and especially dogs, uh, who don't necessarily love to be so close to each other. Um, although I will say that the current practice has done a wonderful job of, um, articulating the, um, comings and goings of the clients. Um, Dr. Marsh, who, as I said, worked very closely with me in the final years of my service dog's life, uh, is a, brings a special set of, um, talents to his practice and skill set that I don't see, um, elsewhere in town. And I think, um, this is not a skill set that the town would want to lose. Um, speaking of that, of the town's, um, interest, I think that the location is actually, um, aside from what everyone else has said, I think the location being out of downtown is a plus because I think that, uh, it removes a lot of congestion and a lot of unnecessary traffic heading to say, you know, the post road or thereabouts. Um, I live closer to that end of town than I do to Greenfield Hill, but I can get to this practice in five minutes and I think that removing that congestion, the associated pollution is a plus. I also think that the landscaping plan that's being proposed here is also a plus environmentally. Um, I would think that this practice being expanded would be a plus for the grand list, but that is not my area of expertise. Um, I do think that this is a, um, improvement in the general, um, health and welfare of both the people in the town, the clients and the animals, if we take them into consideration. Um, there's certainly more demand for, um, this particular practice than there is supply at the moment. Um, I think you all know that they can't take on new clients, um, and there certainly are many more people with animals, um, post, you know, or in this phase of COVID, wherever we're at on that spectrum. I think that this building addresses what would be, I would consider to be current veterinary practices and I'm not an expert, but I learned a lot, again, I worked, I was at, I was at Greenfield Animal Hospital a lot with my dog. Um, and I can tell you that, um, just based on what I learned, um, with Dr. Marsh's help, uh, that this building will address what is the current need, you know, current standards for veterinary practice as well as allow for such the, uh, allow for the future of, of veterinary medicine to evolve in this space. Um, I know that is something that, uh, Dr. Marsh brings to the table, um, in this town. He's, he's, um, got a forward looking view on, um, how to care for, for animals, um, in today's world. Um, let's see if there's anything else, oh, and I want to say as a person with a disability, I think it's incredibly important for this town to support and to encourage businesses to have fully accessible, um, parking lots and interiors. And it is a rare thing, um, and for a building to, uh, be built from the ground up, there's not a lot of, you know, space in the town for empty lots and such, so it's very rare to have a facility that, um, is truly accommodating for those with disabilities and also for seniors. So if we think of that population, um, I think that this facility will serve the community well. And, um, I also just want to, uh, speak to, very quickly to Dr. Marsh's character. I, um, cannot tell you how impressed I have been. He literally, uh, helped save my dog's life and, and as I said, saw her through to, um, past her 18th birthday, which, um, considering her, um, near death experience, uh, was quite something, so this is, um, he is a person of great character and of great skill and, uh, so is his staff. And I think that this is a business that, uh, the town should really want to keep in town and should want to keep in the, this, in the Greenfield Hill Village. Uh, so thank you and, um, I, um, look forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, Ms. Coleman. Any member, other member of the public wish to be heard? If you're calling in, please press star six, unmute yourself, I don't see anybody in person. Anybody online, please announce yourself, once, twice. So that'll end the public comment portion of the application, I think there's really only three questions, right, Mr. Fallon?
Look at the site plan that was submitted, uh, it's, uh, it's 26 feet from our building to the Peterson property line.
Which a resident could have been that, been there, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, there is a, uh, as part of the application, there's a signage proposal, there's a compliance sign, the standing sign, you can see it. Show it to the Petersons.
Will you come back for a compliance for the sign or is that?
I think it's part of the, it's, 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 it's part of this proposal.
That's fine, so we'll double check it, stop, there's compliance.
I haven't seen it, I'm sure Dr. Marsh and his, um, normal will follow up, so they'll see that. We have a very modest lighting plan and I would want to add that and because this is part of the conversation that, uh, Andrew's had, I think, with a lot of the neighbors, we plan to turn off the modest parking light after business hours and, and keep on only a very small amount of soft down lighting emanating from the overhang in the building just to provide security and so on and so forth, so that this will be very modest in lighting and what lighting there is will be turned off after business hours and we don't really have evening business hours.
Okay.
And the other question was the considerations of engineering. Obviously, the, the engineering proposal, uh, by Mr. Zumo is robust and meets all of the town's standards and it has been reviewed by, uh, Ms. Jane at the engineering department and, um, she has approved it. So, uh, I think we can have a reassurance that the, uh, the site engineering will be very, very, uh, appropriate. That's really all we have.
Any final questions?
One point, not to deliver anything, the landscape architect, not gonna be anything I would make a decision based on, but I would just urge you to try to do more natives and less non-natives, that's the pollinators.
No.
Just a comment. Yeah, thank you.
Any other final questions?
And thank you for going over your curfew.
No, thank you, yeah, thank you to the commission members and to staff especially for staying extra time, it was a little long and unexpected, but.
This is important, Matt, I'm glad we're able to close the public hearing.
So, and we will close the public hearing and close the meeting.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.